I'm just gonna stay in here, I'm just gonna abstain. I'm just gonna tell you that I'm abstaining from those two, but I'd like to pull them off of the consent so I can at least vote on those. And I will be stepping out for 10 minutes.
In and 11. Okay.
You just sit in while we're talking about it. You just sit in while you're talking about it, you just keep saying it. Call those two. That's what I've been doing since I was a kid.
But these two, I mean, I've already deliberated on them, I just can't vote on them.
I've got six o'clock, so at six o'clock, I call this meeting on Saginaw City Council Order. Welcome. I would like some VIPs to come up front, I would like Scout from Scout Troop Three, Scout Troop Three to come up here and lead the pledge for us. Gentlemen? Up front here, sorry. Up here, gentlemen, right up here. Y'all keep coming around, keep coming around. We got a lot of y'all coming in.
We don't bite.
Well, not much.
Does everybody else please rise?
[laughter]
[inaudible]
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
That's awesome.
All right, item number two is the invocation for that Pastor Shannon Stewart from the Crossword Church. Welcome.
Let us all pray. God of all creation, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. We thank you for the people with whom we have been in contact, our family, our friends, and even strangers. We thank you for the ability to use our minds to discern your will and your work to create a strong and healthy community. We thank you for our community and all who serve it. We thank you for those that teach and those who protect. We thank you for those who clean and those who repair. We thank you for those who works in parks and those who work in roads. Lord, we thank you for those who plan and for those who make the plans happen, for those who heal and for those who counsel. We thank you for those who govern and those who elect. For all who live into in the best of the example of what it means to be a citizen, we say thank you, and we thank you for our community. Now, God, we pray for all in our community who are hungry, unemployed, or uninsured. We pray for all who in our community are mentally or physically ill. We pray for all in our community who may live in violence. For these and all the burdens of our larger community, Lord, hear our prayers. As this meeting begins this evening, I pray for each person here. Give us the clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, due diligence, integrity, and sense of urgency for what our community needs. Give us all listening ears and thoughtful words. Give us all the presence of mind and an open heart. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, audience participation that is covered on the screen. Please silence your cell phones, devices, et cetera, so we can have a nice meeting. I'd like to welcome anyone watching online, I hope we have a good crew. To inform you, we have thirty to forty folks each meeting watching online, I hope that will continue to grow. If you get a chance, check it out. The video is pretty good, I think the audio is pretty solid. I know we've got an overflow crowd this evening, I believe the audio is working in the lobby, so folks can come in as required to address an item. But welcome to all folks here. Item number four, the consent agenda. I've had a request to pull items E and F, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Pull items E and F, so we will vote on action on A, action regarding minutes of July 2nd, B, action regarding approval of audit engagement letter for fiscal year 2018-19, C, action regarding authorization of city manager to execute a partial release of easement and restrictive comments for from Atmos Energy Corporation, and D, action regarding building improvement grant with Frank Reilly. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda items 4A through 4D as presented.
Thank you, Patrick. Charlie second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, or none. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum this evening. So item E, we will discuss item E. Patrick, you want to say something?
I will be abstaining from items E and F. These, these properties are adjacent to property that I own.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, I will entertain any questions or a motion for E and F.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve consent agenda items E, 4E and 4F as presented.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll second.
Valerie, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, all those abstaining? There we go. All right. Excellent, thank y'all. Item number five, presentation to Muscular Dystrophy Association from Saginaw Professional Firefighter Association. For that, Fire Chief Doug Spears.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm really presenting this on behalf of the Saginaw Professional Firefighters Association, which consists of all of our shift personnel. On May 24th and 25th, they organized a fill-the-boot donation event to benefit the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Our department has partnered with the MDA on multiple occasions, collecting donations for them. All of us have likely seen other fire departments do a fill-the-boot campaign. The fire service has been supporting MDA for a little over sixty years. Last year, they had a hundred-plus firefighters participate and collected about twenty million in donations. This year, our firefighter association collected fifty-five-hundred dollars in donations on those two days. Tonight, they wanted to make a present, a formal presentation to the MDA for the donations that they collected. I think we have two MDA representatives here. They'll come in the room along with our fire staff, and then this year was a little different. We were partnered with the family, the Deniston family. They have a son, Wesley Deniston, who suffers from muscular dystrophy. He was our fill-the-boot buddy for the event, so we're gonna have them come in too, and they will make a formal presentation to the MDA. We'll have a picture event, and Mayor will get you in that picture as well, so we'll have them come in at this time.
Everybody come on in.
You're gonna go down there?
Not really.
I believe it's Gina Lansing and Megan Johnson, is that correct? Hi there.
We got a presentation first, chief, or pictures first?
I'm sorry?
Are they gonna, anybody gonna speak?
I'll offer them a chance to speak when they come in. We had a change in the representation from the MDA, so we're doing this on the fly.
So pictures first, then then presentation?
We can do that, yes, sir.
All the firemen aren't in here.
It's the firefighter association. Typically admin is not part of that association.
I didn't know that.
We have our own firefighter association.
Thank you, Mr. Rayell.
So on behalf of the Saginaw Professional Firefighters Association and our boot buddy Wesley, we present this check for fifty-five-hundred dollars to MDA.
So on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association, my name is Megan Johnson, I'm the executive director here in the Dallas, Florida area. We just want to say thank you to you guys, obviously the city, the city members, the fire department, we couldn't do what we do without you guys. Like you said, this is a sixty-five-year tradition that was started by firefighters for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. So again, everything we do can be possible without you guys, so thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you, thanks to you and all the firefighters, we really appreciate that.
Yes, sir. The community always steps up, it seems, so.
Excellent.
Very proud of that.
We'll let them clear out of here briefly. Moving on to item number six, recognition of Saginaw Municipal Court by Texas Municipal Court Education Center participating in Municipal Court Week. Did I skip one? No? Yeah? For that, Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm proud to announce that our municipal court was recognized by the Texas Municipal Courts Education Center for participating in Municipal Court Week. It was the, if you were at the show-and-tell, it was the display that was there. We, during the Municipal Court Week, which was in November, we had the display out at City Hall in the lobby there and handed out traffic safety information, and so our municipal court is being recognized for participating in that and promoting traffic safety. So here to receive the recognition is our Municipal Court Judge Lorraine Erby, our court administer, administrator Monica Rojas, and our court clerk Alma Young. So Mayor, if you want to give them their certificate.
Do we want anybody to speak? Judge, you want to speak? You want to say anything? No? All right.
You've got a lot of glue on that.
Budget Presentation Award to Kim Quinn. For that, City Manager Gabe Ray.
Mayor and Council, I'm happy to report to you that the city has received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. I believe we're close to a thirty-year streak? Thirty-two-year streak, I stand corrected. I will tell you from personal experience, starting off in the budget office, putting a budget document together is a Herculean task, requires tremendous attention to detail, and also following the guidelines set forth by the GFOA. So happy to recognize Kim and Stacy. You might remember Stacy was pinch hitting for Janice England, so she's been with us about a year now and has done really well. She's won us an award along with Kim, so we'll probably keep both of them, I want to let you know. But would like to thank them for their good work, and since we're taking pictures this evening, we'll get a quick picture.
So I begin my exercise for the evening, I think we'll sit down for a bit. At 6:14, we're in a public hearing. Consider action regarding a request for approval to amend 2016 Comprehensive Plan from Office Professional to Neighborhood Commercial and change the zoning from Office Professional to Neighborhood Commercial on approximately 5.93 acres of land out of the portion of Track 2A Abstract 1849 AF Albright Survey located in northeast corner of Knowles and West McIlroy Boulevard. For that, Public Works Director Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a little bit about this request, this request being made by the MacNeil Family Real Estate Partnership. Engineer representing the family is the Baron Stark Engineers, and Chuck Stark is here this evening to address and present the request. Existing land use, Office Professional, as you stated, and the proposed use is Neighborhood Commercial. I would just tell you a little bit more about the request, that the intended use is for a skilled nursing facility, and for a skilled nursing facility in this proposed zoning, there will be an SUP, a specific use permit required. The property is unplanted, so we have a plat making its way to council along with the SUP. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on July 9th and voted unanimously to make the recommendation for approval. So unless you have any questions of me, I think the engineers would probably like to make their request.
Any questions to Rick, we want to hear from the engineers. Let's move forward to the engineers, what do you say?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Chuck Stark, I'm with Baron Stark Engineers. I represent both the land owner and the proposed developer of this facility. As Rick said, this is a proposed skilled nursing center. It'll be approximately a hundred and twenty beds. It's approximately a ten thousand, or ten million dollar construction project, has around a hundred full-time and part-time employees with an annual payroll of about four million dollars. So anyway, the reason this site was selected was because of, you know, the demographics of the North Tarrant County area. It scores very well. We went through a process of finding a site that met the size needs, had utilities, those kind of side things, and this was the site that my client selected to pursue this project. Tonight's zoning is part one of a three-part process where we have to come to you, as Rick alluded to. We also have a site plan and a final plat in the process. Tonight is simply the zoning. During our pre-development phase, we were advised by staff that this would be the appropriate zoning along with the SUP for this use, and so that's what brings us here tonight. I have a copy of the site plan, I know this is a little beyond just a zoning request discussion, but there's, I would like to inform you of the project and answer any of your questions. It's a single-story structure, it meets, it's a hundred percent masonry, shingled roofs, it's designed to blend into a residential setting. One of the pluses of this site that appealed to the developer, and they own and operate these at multiple locations or build them around the state, so they're very versed in selecting these things, is the presence of the city park directly across the street. That is a opportunity for their patients to, you know, get out and be ambulatory and get some exercise. This is not a long-term care facility, this is more of a rehab facility, thirty, sixty, ninety-day stays. There's not people that, you know, live there, that would be more in the assisted living type classification, but this is a skilled nursing facility. Again, I would like to answer any of your questions. One little sidebar I would like to throw out, I know there is a discussion on a master plan for Knowles Drive and all that's on your agenda tonight and all. One thing that we were discussing with staff is the appropriateness, I guess you would say, of a roundabout at this intersection. We would just like to go on record at this time, is that we are not in favor of a roundabout. There's been a recently installed stoplight that helps to regulate the traffic. As an engineer, I understand the benefits of a roundabout for traffic flow, but one thing that I would like you to think of is in a roundabout, you do not have a regulated stop of any type. And as I said, it's a draw to our development to have the park across the street, but with no, you know, walk signal or anything particular for these type of individuals, we see that as very much of a detriment. And so we would encourage you to stay with the four-way stop, or the stoplight situation. What questions would you have of me? I have a copy of the plan here. I'm trying to put it on working, and I think you will see this hopefully in August as an actual item, but I think it's important to be informed on what the full proposal is when you're looking at a zone. We believe this is a very much a appropriate land use for this location. Traffic generation is minimal with a facility of this type. It scores very low on the traffic scale. It does not have any late-night hours of operation to speak of, other than a shift change at about ten, so you don't have a lot of coming and going in the evening hours. Visitation shuts down, depending on the day of the week, anywhere from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The largest traffic day is by far Sunday, when they have family members visiting and that type of thing. With that said, what could I answer for?
Before we go with questions, could I ask Bren real quick, just to remind us all of our role in this, since this is a zoning question, would you just go over that real briefly?
Certainly. Zoning is legislative, and you have discretion as the legislative body to entertain the application. It does require a public hearing, but as long as your decision is reasonable, it's fully discretionary, it's not a ministerial function.
I guess part of my other question is, I'm afraid we're gonna go into the use, the actual specific use of this as opposed to the zoning, so how do we best deal with that?
Well, so the application before you is a request to change from one distinct zoning district that allows a multitude of uses to another traditional straight zoning district that allows a multitude of uses. Even though what has been stated tonight is that the intended proposed use will come forward in August with a specific request for an SUP for that skilled nursing home, your decision to rezone the property today will immediately authorize all of the land uses that are permitted in that zoning district.
Thank you, Bren. All right, with that, questions, council?
I just wondered, is it one-story or two-story?
It is a single-story building.
Single-story, okay.
Correct.
Mary, please.
I guess this is for Bren, changing from Office Professional to Neighborhood Commercial. And it just seems like this use to a non-professional seems more like Office Professional than Neighborhood Commercial. I just thought that was, it just struck me. So how does it get put in that category of Neighborhood Commercial?
Sometimes the titles of the groupings are for convenience only, and it may be non-intuitive to include a particular use in a particular district, but be that as it may, what controls is what the table actually says rather than the sort of common sense understanding of what the titles might otherwise mean. If that helps.
It does. But it seems like this you should have been put in Office Professional.
And that's-
More than Neighborhood Commercial, but I didn't get to vote on it.
Well, understood, and I can appreciate the commonsensical approach, but yeah, oftentimes that's not the case.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, Mary stole one of my questions. The other question I have is, I mean, we're looking at a special use permit for your facility. What exactly would we see in a normal Neighborhood Commercial-type zone? What type of businesses?
Well, Rick may be able to answer more quickly, otherwise I have the code open.
Just, just a couple of-
Generally, a Neighborhood Commercial would be like your local convenience store, any kind of commercial use of that nature that's smaller in scale, as opposed to, say, a law mart, which would be a community of broader scale of commercial use or zoning.
Okay, thank you.
So Office Professional would not allow the use at all, is that right? With or without a specific use permit? Is that the way I understand it?
Office Professional, Office Professional would allow the use by right. So to their credit, they went forward with an SUP, which would help safeguard maybe some of the concerns of the neighborhood and of the city council if you had specific concerns about the use or-
Okay, so as I understand it then, there's no reason for this change to occur?
If I may, sir, that is not the way we were advised.
That's, that's what I'm curious about.
No, we were advised that this was the zoning category, either the local commercial or there's a more intensive retail one, would be the ones we would have to seek. Two, I believe your code calls it nursing home use. Now, if that's incorrect, then-
I need to better understand that. And the reason I need to better understand that is because an Office Professional zoning currently, if your deal does not go through, and we decide to convert this to Neighborhood Commercial, a 7-Eleven can be built on that corner, and I know that a lot of folks do not want to see that happen.
I understand that.
So at this point, if Office Professional will allow the use-
No, the way I'm reading it, Office Professional prohibits this use, Neighborhood Commercial allows it with a specific use permit, Community Commercial allows it by right.
Okay.
And that's what we were advised-
Okay. All right, and just, I want to be clear on that. The next thing I want to be clear about is in 2013, the city had to defend itself from a sizable lawsuit from a rehabilitation center, is that correct?
Yes.
Because it was being located in a, in a place that nobody wanted it in the city. So we were essentially discriminating against the developer.
The allegation was that we were treating that particular use differently than we were treating similar non-addiction treatment-type uses.
Which this would be.
In my opinion, this is fundamentally different in a number of ways. We were addressing, and the argument was, that that particular type of use was not dissimilar to a clinic, okay? Urgent care clinic, rehab clinic. This particular use allows for temporary residency. In my opinion, that distinguishes it entirely from the type of use where it is a, it is a treatment center by the hour, and it is basically outpatient service. This is not that type of facility, and so in my mind legally, it's very distinguishable.
So Bren, you understand that I want to avoid the jeopardy of creating a precedent?
Absolutely, absolutely, and I don't-
Establish an overlay district for this purpose?
I don't think we ever have, and so any, as you all may recall, urgent care facilities are not permitted in anything other than very specific zoning districts. We have a clinic overlay district. This is a semi-residential medical-type service that, in my mind, is very different and would not create a precedent, it would not jeopardize the changes to the zoning ordinance that this council made over the past few years.
And there is a way that we can memorialize that in the specific use permit?
We can certainly add recitals to the ordinance that the council finds that this is distinguishable, certainly. But the way that zoning law works is staff, in Texas, staff is entitled to render reasonable interpretations of the zoning ordinance. Those determinations are appealable within a very short window of time to the Board of Adjustment. If no appeal is made to the Board of Adjustment, that determination stands legally. But be that as it may, I can certainly still add legislative findings in the recitals to the SUP that the council finds that due to the residential, temporary residential nature of this use, that it is entirely distinguishable.
So there are a number of my constituents in the audience tonight, and I want to make it clear to them, because some of them are under the impression that you're providing a nursing home facility, and you are not providing a nursing home facility, you are providing a rehabilitation center with a thirty-to-ninety-day stay timeframe. Short-term.
That is correct. It is a short-term stay. This is not an assisted living facility, it is not a Alheimers Treatment Facility. That is not what this does.
Okay. So we are in desperate need in this community for assisted living and nursing home facilities. We are in desperate need of that. You've gotten a lot of attention because this has been characterized to a lot of folks in the community as a nursing home. Am I correct or am I incorrect?
Correct.
Okay. So just, just know that this is almost like pulling the rug out from a lot of folks out there in the- out there in the audience. Uh, I have aging in-laws that I would like to see very close to my house. So I was excited about the potential of this being a nursing home facility close to home, uh, rather than having to drive to Hazel. And I know, I think, Todd, you're in the middle of that. You're having to commute to see your mom. So apologize for the big audience you've got out there. I think you had a lot of people excited about this. And Bren, I'm happy to know that we're able to at least memorialize the fact that we're not putting ourselves in jeopardy by putting a clinic facility in a neighborhood.
I, I don't, I, I wouldn't characterize this as a clinic. I think there's a, there's a fundamental difference. I also think that regrettably, part of the mischaracterization or misunderstanding about the nature of this use is our zoning table of uses just has one use and it's a bucket and, and within which many different nuanced, uh, types of uses that are all similar fall. And unfortunately, the title given in our code is nursing home. What, we, we can certainly unbundle that term to add more nuanced, uh, land use identifiers so that this particular application, if it were to come forward again, would never have to be construed under the umbrella of nursing home within our zoning ordinance.
So just to address my initial concern of converting from office professional to a neighborhood commercial use or zone, uh, if your deal were to not go through, if funding didn't happen, whatever number of things that can happen to keep it from going through, what is it that we can do to protect ourselves from that all of a sudden becoming a viable piece of property to develop a seven eleven?
So unfortunately, this particular approach, and I, I don't disagree with Rick, that this is the most risk averse approach. The, the only other alternative that I could possibly contemplate, and this is without looking at your ordinance, uh, the types, the, the type of zoning district that allows, the only type of zoning district that allows you to strictly control each and every use, as limited as they may be, is plan development. So, i- if, and it, it is up to the applicant which type of zoning to seek. Uh, but you, you are correct. If, if this is rezoned in accordance with the request, it would allow for some of these gas station and other uses, should this particular use ultimately not be funded or not be viable for whatever way, for whatever reason.
So, uh, would, would it be out of the realm of possibility if we can get the developer to agree to rezone it to plan development on the fly tonight?
Well, we couldn't, it hasn't been noticed for plan development tonight.
Okay.
But I will tell you that seeking the S U. P. is procedurally identical to seeking plan development.
Okay.
In terms of notices and hearings and number of meetings. And so, you know, this, you could table this item tonight and recommend that the application be converted from, i- i- if, if your code allows it. Again, I need to look at your plan development chapter. Sometimes there can be restrictions that require that there be a mixture of uses before being eligible to apply. Uh, however, and Rick may be able to weigh in on that, um, as well. But it, you could ta- you could still table this, and if it were determined by staff with my assistance that, uh, plan development is viable, then instead of the S U. P. application coming forward, the, the very same procedure be followed with plan development. And then you could take no action on the rezoning that's tabled from tonight and instead take action on the P. D. and strictly control and authorize only this use.
Can you imagine a reason why your client would be opposed to that?
No, let, let, let me speak to that. Typically, when we do a proposal such as this, that has a S U. P. attached to it, it's always press- preferable for the S U. P. and the zoning change to be heard on the same agenda.
Agreed.
It, it prohibits the, the, uh, catch twenty-two that you, you just alluded to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And we made our submittals with that goal in mind. The, um, going through the staff review comment on the plat and the drainage study and various things like that, uh, it delayed the S U. P. and the plat application thirty days, but we were already at P. and Z. last week. And, uh, and we had a discussion with staff, should we, what should we do for tonight? And since it was already noted for tonight's council meeting, it would have to have been opened regardless and then tabled or something like that. We decided to go ahead and come tonight and, and make our presentation to you. We would not be opposed to you tabling the zoning application and tie it together with the S U. P. at your next meeting. I hate to take a step way back and go into a P. D. application. Uh, experience tells me those are always rather laborious. Um, does that sound reasonable?
It sounds reasonable to me. I, I'm not sure if it sounds reasonable to the rest of the council. It just, in my mind, I, we need to belt and suspender ourselves, the city, from egregious overdevelopment in areas and, and-
I, I can very much appreciate your point.
And we are seeing it all over our city.
Right.
And this is really the only opportunity that we have to protect ourselves from that.
Understood.
So I, I want to make sure that we're not jumping ahead and at the same time, leaving ourselves wide open for somebody to backdoor a deal.
Understood.
Okay?
Well, it is certainly our intent, if there's a project, we want it to be this skilled nursing facility. We have no desire for any other thing. And we do not want to leave this, the city handicapped, uh, for some type of, I don't know what use. Um, it's just, as I understand it, this, we have to go with this zoning district to be able to do this use by the way your code is set up.
Yeah.
So-
Bren, can you, can you confirm that?
Well, yes, so, wh- what they are seeking, the zoning district they are seeking, uh, would still allow conditional approval of the use. There isn't more, as I mentioned earlier, there isn't more intense commercial district, community commercial-
Mm-hmm.
-that allows it by right. And so, i- if they had sought straight community commercial, then it would be allowed by right and, and they would not return with conditional zoning, uh, request pursuant to the S U. P. But I think this is the, this is the way that you can control it best without requiring, without considering a P. D. Now, you, you asked about the P. D. I just, with, and with Rick's help, um, just confirmed you, regrettably, you have a ten acre net minimum size for the parcel, and this is a five and a half acre site. So we would, they would either need a, uh, Z. B. A. variance, or we would need to amend the minimum acreage requirement to even seek a P. D. in order for that to be a viable option.
The, the whole question about the more intensive zoning classification, uh, that allows it by right was also discussed at our pre-development. And it was staff's preference and their advice to us, and I think it's well founded, is if we went the less intensive commercial route, which required the S U. P., that that gives you the, the assurances that you're looking for.
Yes, I, I'm very comfortable going forward with the S U. P. process. I think this is, I think we've chosen, and I think staff recommend the correct pathway for us, for the council, to protect ourselves. I'm, I know everybody else feels, I'm very comfortable with moving that. Maybe we want to do it where we bundle them together, but at the same council meeting, we could table and do that. I'm fine with that.
And we have no objection to that, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Would, would that be done in two weeks? Is it, would the timing work out?
There are still some outstanding, uh, plat comments that would have to be considered, but I mean, I think the S U. P., the site plan could go forward. The plat may follow the next meeting, but-
Oh, sure. No, we could, we could do the zoning and the S U. P. together.
Right.
At the next meeting.
And we, uh, however, we need the, tie the plat in with this also. And, and I know th- this is not the, the topic tonight, but that's street, the street configuration, uh, is, is imperative to the success of this project. And so, that's one of our requests, is that plat, site, S U. P. site plan and zoning be bundled together.
I might speak to that just a little bit. Were the requirement, as you know, we're, we're gearing up for a, a bond and Knowles is a high candidate project. And Kimmy Horn has looked at intersections of both Knowles and, and Bo- and McElroy and Bowles at Knowles. That's a ton, ton twister, but anyway, they found that the roundabout is the more efficient intersection. So we, uh, made the ask for additional right of way to accommodate the roundabout. Now, if the roundabout doesn't happen, as we get more into engineering, then we can certainly vacate right of way, but because of the timing of this request, we're being conservative.
But from our perspective, the dedication of the right of way makes our project not viable.
I understand that, but, uh, we have four schools within a half mile radius of that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
And during the school year, I happened to live in the subdivision adjacent to the park. And between ten minutes to seven and fifteen minutes after seven, I can't leave the subdivision.
I can appreciate that.
So, li- I, I'll tell you, there are mixed feelings about a roundabout in that location. I don't know what the weight is for or against at this point, but I certainly do not want to tie that to this development.
That's fair enough.
We'll say also that, that, uh, Kimmy Horn is looking at ways to try to accommodate the roundabout within existing right of way, so would not require dedication. I don't know that we have that answer tonight, but we are looking at it.
Yeah, I don't get too far into those weeds tonight.
Sure, yeah.
But no, it's, it's, point well taken. Yes, sir. We appreciate it. Alright, so, well, council, more discussion, more questions? Any other, any other questions for the engineers? Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. I do have, uh, some cards, people want to speak, though this is a public hearing, people can speak without finna of a card. Um, based on the information you have, would anybody still like to speak? And if so, you're welcome to come. Ms. Reed, you're welcome to come up, please.
If there's anyone else who knows.
No, go ahead, please.
Are you giving me three minutes?
Ma'am, how much time do you need, ma'am?
Well, I, I'm Dale Reed. I live at eight hundred Palomino Drive in Saginaw. Um, of course, I came tonight to encourage you because I have worked on this personally for a nursing home out here since nineteen sixty-nine. I was thirty-three years old at the time. I'm now eighty-three, so I'm almost ready for one. So I, I really would like to see our city, uh, pursue something. I will be honest with you about, and Patrick, I appreciate, uh, you mentioning all of these and bringing up these questions because, um, I, I am excited about the hundred and twenty bed and so forth. I would also be very excited about a long-term nursing care facility as well as this. This is a very good start. Uh, I, my question tonight for you would be, um, in this, whatever classification of zoning you have to go with, uh, would this be within your zoning to still have the long-term nursing care? Uh, if they choose to, and I don't know this particular group, but if they choose to expand, uh, would that also be in, included in that zoning, or do you know?
It would, it would fall in the same, under the same zoning. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Bren?
Well, so, remember, because the proposed rezoning requires conditional approval by the S U. P., you're going to control exactly what comes in. So i- i- if the S U. P. has a site plan and it limits it to this, it would require amending the S U. P. to expand the use.
Not the zoning, but the media.
That's correct.
Uh, then I would like to, uh, ask a question, uh, to you tonight, and you may or may not be able to answer this, but, uh, is there a possibility of expanding this into a long-term care facility?
I don't know the answer, uh, but I'll certainly find out for you.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. So, well, I just, you know, that I really, I was so excited to hear about this and I'm for it, and I think we almost have an obligation to take care of our citizens out here. I started the senior citizens many years ago, worked with them fifteen years. So back then, in the early seventies, we needed one then, and we still need one for our, our people out here. So I encourage you to, uh, do everything on your part. I encourage them to do everything on their part, to see that we, we have a, something really nice for our community out here. I appreciate it, so I'm not going to take my thirty minutes, so, but I appreciate all the council and what you're doing for us, and I hope that you can all work something out for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm Barbara Bierling, one of the owners of the property that we're talking about. I have a question for you. When this contract was presented to us and when you, Mr. Smithers was here, was that his name, the last meeting, I was under the impression, and I think my memory is pretty good about it, that you would have people that would, that could stay as many as a hundred days if, for a rehab by Medicaid. Was that not said to us?
It was.
Okay. And then I understood that if someone had the money, they could stay on a longer basis by private pay.
I believe that's true.
That was said to us, okay. That is what I consider a nursing home. And I think a lot of you people that are here, it's what I said to you. Is that not right?
I agree.
And that's what y'all told us. And that's what we were presenting, and it was presented from Mr. Smithers, and also you were part of that.
I want to, I say, I am not totally familiar with the internal operations of the facility.
When he stood out here in the lobby and talked and talked to you about some of y'all out here, some of you may not have. But that is what he said. And to me, uh, my father was in a nursing home for a period of time, and they go there for rehab and then they have to stay, and if you can pay the price, you can stay there. Now, that's what we see, we call a nursing home, right? Now, I, I said something about, do they have Medicaid? And I was told, no, that they didn't have Medicaid. And I think that's what Mr. Smithers said to us that night. Were any of y'all, did any of y'all hear that conversation about a nursing home? I was under the impression that that was what they were presenting to us the last time. Were you?
No, I wasn't here. But that's what I know everybody wants, and what he said was a physical therapy.
That's what was begged to me and, and-
That's two different things.
As a relative and an owner and, and my sister and I had it together, and Linda's here. And that is how it was presented. And I have been begged and begged by Dale Reed to get a nursing home. Well, I talked to a lot of people, and they either wanted us to take an interest in it, oh, we're too old to take an interest in anything, you know, we need to sell the property and move on, you know? So that's what I'm saying. And I feel like that, no, we don't want a filling station on that corner. And no, I think personally, I lived with roundabouts in the Cayman Islands, and they were a destination. And you put us old people out here going around a roundabout. You've had, and with that park over there and a roundabout and these kids, that's a problem. So, I mean, I'm just saying, think about it. The stoplight, if it's working, that's fine, but the stop signs used to work real well. So that's what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Barbara, can I, Barbara, can I ask you something?
Yes.
Is this not what you wanted for that property, this physical therapy thing?
Well-
Honestly?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Let me say this. What he said was that it's a place that a lot of people come when they're in the hospital and-
For rehab.
I have recently gone through a rehab thing, and I had to go to rehab for like two weeks out of the hospital. I didn't have anyone to take care of me. And I had to go to that facility. And then this is basically what y'all were talking about. You could go there, and I think Medicare will pay a certain, or they'll pay for it up to so many days. And then, you know, if you wanted to stay there, you could pay for it and be there, you know? And that is fine, but I just, I just hate for it. I don't know, that isn't what I understood.
That's what I want to know.
I didn't understand you to say that tonight. What he said to us the time before was fine. That was exactly fine.
Right.
But I didn't understand it.
I'll, I'll certainly get that clarified for you, if it's a division of percentage use of this and that and whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we need a nursing home here, okay? And I think that we need it where someone could go and- And I think that we need it where someone could go and stay a short time, and Medicare pays for that up to so many days a year. Hopefully, I didn't have to stay there two weeks. But I, I'm just saying that I don't know how a place like this could operate, and I'm just, you know, somebody in and out, in and out. I don't know how you'd ever fill a place up, you know? So I think that we need, I want, as a seller, for us to know what we're talking about.
I will certainly.
And I will say, no, I personally don't want any more 7-Elevens, we've had enough of them now. I mean, and I don't want someone buying that from us and zoning it and not getting to build what you want and flipping it to a 7-Eleven.
Ms. Bierling? Can I ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The adjacent property belongs to you, is that right? Still belongs to?
It has 19.08 acres, all the way.
So if, if a master planned development, where you have currently a multifamily zoning, abutting this property, I think that's the way it's zoned today.
Oh, y'all are the ones that.
No, no, and I understand that. I'm just wondering, since we're talking about a 10-acre tract being the cutoff for a planned development, would it make sense for us to have the 120-bed rehab facility and then right next door to it have a nursing home facility?
I think it'd be perfect.
Is there, is there a way, is there a way that we as a city can encourage that through some incentive?
Yeah, with some incentive, you can get a lot.
I'm dead serious about this.
You can't keep running people off.
And that's what I'm thinking, I think.
We're running a little far field of this, but yeah, but thank you, ma'am, appreciate it, I think it's good information. I think we're, and I don't want to speak of, I think we're to a point we may want to table this tonight and reconsider.
Yes, let's make a motion to table it.
And plan it, wait, hold on, hold on, we're not done yet, so, does anybody else want to speak? We're still in a public hearing, I can still have anyone else speak if they would like to.
Dale's got her hand up.
Mayor, I, here I go again, I was coming to try to get my three minutes, but I did want to address one thing, because I think there has been a concern with some of our residents abutting up to this property in the residential area. I, I'm so old up here and done so many things, but this is not a new zoning. I happen to be on the, we made the first master plan, so this property down here has been a light commercial for many, many, many years, and I'm so sorry if the residents were not informed when they bought their properties about that, but I will say, this is not by any means new, so as you're considering all of this, it's been zoned that way for many years.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so anybody else, anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Michael Penninger, 816 Willwood Drive. I live right behind this property. My house is around here, which will be right across from the entrance.
Okay.
I'm going to see the majority of the traffic. One of my questions for both the owner and you guys, being that this is a facility where emergency vehicles will be coming and going on occasion, would it be a good idea to have multiple entrances, instead of all traffic coming in from the, from one main, main board? Also, I was a little prepared about, we have a lot of flooding, you know, down at the park whenever it rains heavy, and it's designed to go out that way. I don't know if the addition of all the cement is going to increase that or not, I don't know if I should be concerned about getting flood insurance in the area, if we have like heavy, heavy rains.
And just for that, there would be some kind of retention involved in this process, there would have to be in this project. We would, that's part of our ordinance, is that's required, so, that's one thing, but I don't want.
That's fine. As far as like safety, and y'all are considering roundabout, I know, I know that most of the roundabouts have curbs, and I think that would probably help a little of the, I guess the concerns around that roundabout. My main concern tonight was, you know, just a single entrance to this location, and it being right, right behind my house. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're still in a public hearing, so it's open, you don't have to fill out a card, anybody else want to speak on this topic? If not, at eight, at 6:56, take us out of a public hearing, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table this for further discussion.
I'll second.
Valerie's second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Excellent, thank you. Thank you, staff, thank you very much. Moving on, item number 10, or item number nine, sorry. Consideration action regarding sale of tax notes for that, City Manager Gabe Raym.
I don't think I'd want that required for Bierling. And I'm probably, she's a woman. She doesn't say anything. I don't know what she's talking for. Because she honestly thought she was going to say that. So. Where do you do them? She can go ahead and discuss the products. It's like, wow.
Okay.
Mayor and counsel, now that we have chairs, our scouts seem to have went home, so.
Okay, excellent.
It's past all their bedtime.
Right, right. This item, if you'll recall, I believe Lewis McLean did a presentation.
Was it May, Kim, or June? June 6th?
Where we talked about this very issue, there's a memo from Andrew Friedman from Samco discussing this. So what is proposed for your consideration and action tonight is this. Due to, on the INS, the debt portion of our tax rate, we have capacity that's coming off this year. For us to keep a level tax rate, the only way we can do that is to issue a new debt obligation, which would be a tax note, to keep the, the tax rate level. We would do this to accomplish a number of projects. We have preliminarily given or discussed land acquisition for future facilities, community facilities that likely would be, go to voters for review and approval as a, a bond item. So Andrew prepared the memo. If there's any specific questions regarding this, the timing is important because we have to publish our tax rate notifications, our truth and taxation calculations here in the month of August, and that's why we're seeking your direction now, as we move forward through that process here in the next few weeks.
That's exactly correct. My name is Andrew Friedman with Samco Capital Markets, serve as one of your financial advisors. The timing of this is, is a little bit tricky if you do want to move forward, and a lot of cities are in this exact position right now, it's kept us very busy, as your INS tax rate is being compressed due to growth and/or your debt falling off. In order to keep that future capacity, and I think y'all have a very simple tax rate impact analysis that looks at a future bond election, in order to keep that tax rate up at its current level, as we've gotten more growth, you have to have debt service in order to set that there. Truth and taxation requires that you set your tax rate sufficient to cover your debt service and no more. Well, in order to be able to set our tax rate at that level, if you want to move forward, we have to have sold the tax notes before you adopt that tax rate, which happens, I think, early September. So you still have time to do that, but it's not something where you can set your tax rate higher than it needs to be in anticipation of taking out debt sometime in the next year. Truth and taxation doesn't allow for that, that would be against the law, and so you have to have sold that debt before you adopt that tax rate, hence the informal action item before you this evening. I'm happy to answer any and all questions you have about it. If it'd be helpful to walk through the tax rate impact analysis, I'm happy to do that as well. If you do choose to move forward, this isn't off, this isn't obligating you to issue the debt right now, that would be, that would come before you at your meeting on August 6th. We'd have, we'd go out for competitive bids, and we'd bring the bid results along with the best interest rate, meaning the lowest interest rate to you at that time. The council would have an opportunity to vote on whether or not to take out that debt at your August 6th meeting, funds would be delivered on September 3rd.
Could you, yeah, would you walk through the, the tax rate analysis just briefly?
Absolutely.
Please.
We've got some assumptions up here at the top, and, and you can see, we look at one, what your existing tax rate is, and then we make some growth assumptions, and you can see for fiscal years 21 through 23, we make a 3.5% annual growth assumption, and that's shown in that projected taxable value column, that's the second from the left. From there, the columns moving out, you can see our current general obligation debt, just to the right of that, that shows in our fiscal year 2019, we had $3,381,000 of debt service paid for from your INS tax rate. The required INS rate there of 19.12 cents does not reflect your actual tax rate, y'all have used a little bit of fund balance to help bring that down, but in order to create an apples-to-apples comparison, we, we left it as such. So then you look at the following year, as you get additional growth in your tax base and your debt service roughly remains the same, it forces your tax rate down as a result. And then as the years go on, you continue to get more growth and more debt falls off, you can see that that, your, your required INS tax rate goes down with it. That allows you an ability, and affords you an ability to issue additional debt through a bond election, through certificates of obligation, through tax notes, however you wish, to take on more debt without increasing your INS tax rate. And so one of the things we were tasked with over the last year and a half probably, was coming up with, what is our capacity to issue debt without having a tax rate increase? And so that was how we came up with that $27 million number, and then we sketched that out over a few different issues, one being the $2 million tax note brought before you this evening, and then a $15 million issue in 2020, and a $10 million issue in 2022, all without increasing your tax rate above the current tax rate that you, you currently have adopted. And, and the goal of that was, or the intention of that from the staff level in consultation with us, was to give you time to call a bond election potentially sometime in 2020. From there, you can see your tax rate, we sell, and the approach has always been to ladder your debt service, so as you sell bonds, in the future, you're laddering that and structuring as debt service matures and goes away, we're selling new debt service, so you're not always increasing your tax rate. The goal is to allow growth to catch up and to not have big increases in your tax rate, and, and the goal here is to issue $27 million without increasing the INS rate.
Is everybody clear on the purpose of this and why we're doing this, why we're looking at doing this, what the, the strategy behind this is? Okay. Let's try to explain that, and I think I am, but I want to make, hear, hear the professionals explain it to us. So will you explain to us one more time, maybe using different words, why we're doing this, why it is beneficial and advantageous at this time to do it like this?
Sure. If, if, and there's not a right or a wrong, but if your, your, if your goal is to fund future improvements over time, and we've got an INS tax rate that's 18 some odd cents right now, if, as our tax rate goes down over the years, that, that decreases the amount of funds we can take out without having to go to the voters and say, this is going to be a tax rate increase in order to support these projects. And that's really, this is just your ability to take advantage of debt that's falling off and layering in new debt to take its place in order to fund future improvements.
So if I, if I can try to maybe dumb it down, because I'm, I'm trying to understand as well. So we are looking, you know, we're talking about a bond package for the last year or so. If we want to do that, we would like to do it without raising taxes. We'd like to keep tax rate as is, hopefully go down this year a little bit, but go to the voters and say, we want you to allow us to issue X number of dollars of, of bond package to do these different projects without raising your taxes. I think that's a great message to give to the voters. They don't, we'll, we'll issue it over time, how it would work, we wouldn't issue $20 million on day one, you'd issue it over many, many years, however many years, 10 years or so. So that's how you're, you're able to do it, and this is one strategy to help us get there. If we don't do this, our tax rate will go down more, then we have to come back up at a bond package, you'd be going to the voters saying, we want to raise your taxes. We're going to do a bond package, but we also want to raise your taxes. This way, we go to the voters and say, we're not raising your taxes. Taxes will stay right here, but you'll get this, 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 and this, these great projects that people have said they already want. Is that a little better way to explain it?
Did a very good job, sir. Sorry you're doing my job.
That's okay, no. And Gabe, Gabe, you want to go into this more, why we're doing this? I know you have gone through this a lot, you want to add.
No, sir, it was a good, good explanation. The one thing I would say, and we've had previous discussions earlier this summer, is that should the council choose to move forward, we could potentially go acquire land that more than likely would give us a spot for a, a future community facility, right? So if we're going to build a new facility or multiple new facilities, the, the first part is where is it going to go? And that's something generally we've talked about, so that would give us the funds to do that, acquire that, and it'd be preparation for a, a May bond election. In addition to, we've identified a few other projects that we could fund, parking lot expansion at PD, we talked about potentially some mobility improvement, some sidewalk work, playground addition, that sort of thing, so it, we'd be able to do some projects very quickly.
All right, questions? Council questions for this?
Yes.
This gentleman, over here.
Okay. Mayor, I understand your, your description of this, and I want to be very clear here. We're talking about our current, our debt rate, as it stands right now, is 38% of our total tax rate, okay? We want to be at 35%, okay? Naturally, as we pay off our debt, we want to see our debt rate sink. We want to see our tax rate go down as we pay off debt. It does not make sense to me that we are paying interest on a loan for $2 million just to preserve our tax rate and keep it from going down, knowing full well that we have well more than $2 million in our pocket that we could spend on these improvements, and we can repay ourselves in a bond issue. When the bond does pass, I don't understand why we're talking about paying interest, and all we're doing is conveniently telling our taxpayers that we're not going to raise taxes. That makes no sense to me that we would not, that we would pay interest just to keep from lowering our tax rate.
If you allow your INS tax rate to go down, I think it's included in the memo, that capacity drops from 27 million to 21 million. You kick the can another year down the road, you continue to get growth, your INS tax rate's forced down, your capacity goes from 21 million to, you know, whatever that number will be, 17, 18 million.
I understand, Andrew, but.
You're, you're not incorrect in what you're saying.
So Andrew, if we have a $40 million bond program, we're going to increase our taxes, right?
That's true.
So only if we stop at 27 million will we not increase our taxes based upon your calculus, and that calculus could be wrong. Some of your assumptions could be wrong in terms.
That is the nature of assumptions.
That, that's right. So what I'm saying is that if our bond is more than 27 million, our tax rate's going up anyway.
That is correct.
So what I'm saying is, why in the world are we spending money on interest to prevent us from lowering our tax rate? Why?
It's easier to pass a bond election when you can say that you're not increasing your taxes.
But we're not saying tonight that it's only going to be a 27 million dollar bond.
No, this is binding you to capacity. It's a decision for you all, I'm not saying that there's one right answer.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying it, we've talked about a fire station, one fire station chewing up almost that 20 million.
Sure.
Okay, and we've got a lot of other things to talk about, so.
I would note that you're not paying interest simply to preserve your tax rate, you're paying interest on a loan to make different municipal facility upgrades, sidewalk improvements.
We can do that with cash on hand and not pay any interest.
Certainly you can.
So you're a financial advisor to us.
Yes. Spending down, spending down your reserves.
But, but, Andrew.
To fund capital projects. Spending down your reserves to fund capital projects isn't what most cities can do.
So Andrew, you're, you're a financial advisor to us. Does your company profit from these tax notes?
Certainly, we collect the fee for advising.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't think you have a consultant that doesn't benefit from the services they provide.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, other questions? Cindy?
Is one of your assumptions, I, I know you talk about a three and a half percent growth, but is that just population or is that?
That's in your overall tax base.
The overall tax base.
Yes, ma'am. So as you see that projected taxable value that starts for fiscal year 2019 at $1,769, taking that three and a half percent over that, that number. And then in future years, 2024 and 2025, we assume a two and a half percent growth rate. Thereafter, we assume no growth, which certainly we hope not to be the case. Cities continue to grow, values continue to increase. It's a conservative analysis to make rather than assuming growth in perpetuity.
And if we were to increase more than 3.5%?
You would have, your INS rate would be forced even lower than we're projecting. Because as your values go up, the number of pennies it takes to support your budget goes down to reach that same revenue level.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It, it does. I'm just trying to put all of it together in a big picture now.
No, certainly, it's not necessarily crystal clear. But as your tax base continues to grow, the number of pennies of taxes, tax rate that it takes to support the budget goes down with it. So if we're more conservative than the reality ends up being, your tax rate would be even lower.
So if we opt to not grow, then the opposite would happen?
I'm sorry?
If our tax rate or tax base did not grow?
Correct, yeah. If, if we went through a recession where we either stagnated or lost value, cities, the state over will be forced to increase their tax rate in order to generate the same amount of revenue as a year before.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, other questions? And one thing to keep in mind is our tax rate will go down this year. I'm not sure if we have a number yet, but a couple pennies, probably we're at 47, it'll go down. I don't know what final number yet. I don't want to make Kim commit to anything, but it will go.
By law, they'll certify by Thursday. I'm hoping to get values before then, but so far we haven't had values.
We're, we're assuming it's going to go down. We don't know how much, we don't know what yet.
So, so if you remember just a, a simple calculation, base times rate equals revenue. If you control one of the variables, you control the outcome, right? So we don't control the base. TAD does. We do control the rate. When our base increases, thankfully, we're in a situation, our community's growing. Look all around, rooftops, especially on the east side, we've got new value coming in as well as existing value, which once Terrent appraisal gives us our certified role, we can make decisions, financial decisions based on that. Ballpark, we're looking at 12%?
Estimates that I've been using were about 11.7, oh, almost 12%.
11 point.
We won't know for sure until.
Right. Existing values have grown by that plus new value, so your point is correct. Our rate, can't commit to you and I won't until we know with real numbers, our, our rate can go down. Want to be clear in mentioning that while the rate goes down, because of that increase in appraised value, which we don't control, the appraisal district does, there may be homeowners and there will be homeowners that pay more city taxes because their values went up. But it's because of that valuation.
So we're really discussing how much our tax rate's going to go down? That's, that's what really part of this discussion entails.
Yeah, so to speak to that, Mayor, just let me understand this. Currently, our debt service tax rate is what, 23 cents?
18.07 cents.
18.07. And, and if we do not issue these tax notes, it drops down to 16 cents?
Correct.
So that's an immediate drop of two cents by not issuing these tax notes, without question. We don't have to worry about whether or not the tax, you know, what TAD's going to do. That is an immediate drop because we're tied to what our debt obligation is. And we know for sure we can drop our tax rate by two cents today if we do not sell these tax notes. Is that right?
The, the amount of cents will depend on the value because your, your rate is still tied to the value.
Okay, but, but I think the forecast that I saw, it drops to 16 using this calculus.
Yes.
Right, with these assumptions.
Okay.
On the flip side of that, you mentioned earlier wanting a goal of the cities is to keep the INS tax rate at 35% of the overall tax rate. As we get into 8% rollback this year, it goes to three and a half percent obviously in 2021. As we become limit on the M and O side, your debt service is going to stay roughly the same. And if you take out a bond, it's going to go out, go up even further in future years. You're going to outpace that 35% pretty rapidly and be well over 40 or 50% depending on how big of a bond package you have. So that's, you know, the other side of that calculus is your M and O side is so limited that will have an implication on, on your stated.
Hence the reason I don't want to start out at 38. I don't want to start out there. I'd rather be starting, starting out at 35. I mean, we're starting out, right now, we've been given grace by the state for another year. Next year, not the same grace. But I'm just, I'm not a fan. How, how much interest are we talking about on $2 million with the debt? And what's the term roughly?
The term right now is 7% of tax notes, limited at a maximum maturity of 7%. You're looking at a probably lock-in interest rates just north of 2%. $140,000 is what's.
Scheduled over the life of the note, 140 grand.
Yes.
And what was the duration?
Seven years.
Seven years. So we're paying $140,000 to keep from dropping our rate two cents.
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
But then the, the upside of doing that is to increase our, our debt capacity.
That's correct.
To 27 million instead of 21 million, it would go down.
That's correct.
So that would be the plus side of doing, selling these tax notes. And I believe you indicated that by approving the sale, we are not obligating ourselves to actually do it, but we are giving ourselves the ability to do so.
Well, your action tonight is not obligating you. Your action on August 6th, if you chose to move forward, would be obligating you.
If we didn't approve this, we couldn't.
Correct.
Do it. By approving it, we have the.
You could decide.
We, we have the ability to do so, should we decide to.
To a certain point, yes. We wouldn't want to go out into.
So I don't think it's just a question of the tax rate, it's also a question of the debt capacity.
Certainly, in our minds and through discussion with staff over the last year, that has been, you know, a, a factor of consideration here. What, as you go to the voters, the public, you know, sentiment, how much tax rate, how much tax increase are people generally willing to withstand? If you let your tax, if you let your tech capacity drop to $18 million and you have a $40 million bond package, the increase that you'd be showing the, the voters as you hold your town halls and, and get that information out, going to be dramatically higher than if it's $27 million of capacity on a $40 million project. The impact would be that much less. And it's, I think, pretty well proven that that just decreases likelihood of passing a bond election the higher the impact on the homeowners is. But that's again for you all to decide, that's not my decision to make.
Sure, all right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your help. Oh, do you have another question? I'm sorry.
So you were talking about the $2 million loan for, and what's, what's the term on that?
Seven years, ma'am.
And we can, can we pay that off early and still?
Typically, they're sold as non-callable. Interest rates are so low right now that when we have done refundings for savings in the past, we're selling this debt so low that the likelihood in two years or three years that interest rates are lower than they are now won't make sense. As your short-term investments generate more interest, your taxable accounts, things like that, it makes less and less sense to take that money out of your different investment accounts to pay off such a low yielding debt. But that's certainly an option that, that we can consider. Making your debt callable either in two years or any time, bond purchasers, the buyers of this tax note, charge an interest rate premium. They want a higher interest rate because of the uncertainty of whether they'll have that loan outstanding for those seven years. So there's an analysis to be made there. The cheapest loan you'll get is where it's outstanding for seven years without your ability to call it in.
So let's say we wanted to take a one-year or even a two-year loan on this. What sort of interest rate and what would that dollar figure be on the interest alone?
Oh, over one year?
Over one year or two years?
If you're talking about borrowing $2 million over one year or two years, you're still probably looking at one and a half percent interest on that. So anywhere neighborhood of probably 20 to $30,000, $40,000. It's, haven't run those numbers, just flying off the seat of my pants to do that. But in order to sell $2 million and have it mature over one or two years, you'd be increasing your tax rate because you're not amortizing that principal over seven years. You're instead cutting that in half. So we'd take many more pennies on the INS tax rate to do so. If you look at this $2 million tax note column, you need $341,000 of debt service in this upcoming year in order to maintain the tax rate. So in that case, you could issue $330,000 of a tax note just to fill that one year, if that was your goal. I wouldn't recommend doing that just because it's a, a waste of, of dollars for such a small amount of a loan in terms of having to pay your bond attorney, financial advisors, things like that to go through the process.
At the end of the day, I see this as spending $140,000 to make it easier to sell a bond. And we don't know if that bond is going to be 27 million or 200 million. We have work to do to sell this bond, whether we have the capacity going into it or not. And I do not see it favorable for the taxpayer to be burdened with $140,000 to make it easy for this council to sell a bond.
Any other questions? Mary, please.
Well, I have a different view, which is we have many projects on the horizon that we would like to see come to fruition in a bond election. Many more than we will probably be able to, to, you know, make come, you know, possible. So I think that need, I think we have to do everything in our power to help that bond election pass. And the less we have to raise taxes and ideally not have to raise them at all, the more likely the bond issue will pass and those projects are needed for our residents. That's the way I look at it.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. I think we discussed enough, I'll entertain a motion on this, this topic.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ability to sell the tax notes as discussed.
Thank you, Mary. Second? I'll second it. All right. All those who favor, raise your right hand. Keep them up. All those opposed? All right, thanks, sir.
Item number 10.
Sorry, I'm not on. Item 10, consideration action regarding award of contract for Willow Creek Park Playground. Patrick?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict. I'll be stepping out for these next two audits.
For 10 and 11, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Rick Trice.
Mayor, it's your pleasure. It might be worthwhile to consider item number 11 before 10 just because it affects the funding for the award of contract. So just request that maybe we consider in that.
We're fine with that? So item 11.
Right, as you're aware, the city in April of 2018 passed a resolution to support half of the funded goal for Project Dream Play for construction of the Willow Creek Playground. That amount was 178,675. Out of that money, we spent $32,500 for La Terra Studios to go ahead and design the project and prepare plan specifications for bid. Our second item that we'll be talking about is the actual award of contract for that, that design. In order to do and fund the project, we will need a contribution for Project Dream Play, which was the agreement going in. We've met with Project Dream Play and have come with, forward with a recommendation for funding agreement. Funding agreement will transfer funds under certain milestones to the city to fund the construction of Project Dream Play. It also gives them discretionary funds up, up to $8,000 for the city manager to, to support things such as grand openings and donor recognition, structures, fencing, just, just the minor construction items that would support the completion of that project. Misty Fars here tonight and she could maybe perhaps talk a little bit about the funding agreement and how that works. But I will tell you that the total contribution for Dream Play under the, under the funding agreement now is 143,000. That's based on cash on hand by the, by the organization. They still have some commitments that haven't come to fruition yet. It's in terms of deposit, deposits of cash. But we felt it was probably prudent to go forward with cash on hand as their contribution. That will be phased into two payments within 15 days of award of contract, which we expect to happen tonight. They'll contribute 83,500 to the city. Your council memo has a, has a typo. Within 15 days after completion, acceptance of the project, they'll give us the remaining $59,500. And again, I mentioned the $8,000 discretionary funds that the city manager would have. And we can move to the award of contract if you'd like and, and then just have a general discussion over both items.
Okay, so number 10?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, we opened bids for the Project Dream Play on, or the Willow Creek Park Playground on June 11th. Grodd Construction was the low bidder at 482,484.50. We've checked their references and they, they've, they've got great references. So we were recommending award contract. Of course, the financial impact will be the cost of the award. We have $146,175 left from our match that we made, the 178,675. That's, that's because we spent $32,500 for La Terra. Dream Play's anticipated contribution, 143,000, which means that we would have to fund 193,309.50 additional funds to, to bring that project to the table for construction. So I, I know there are some questions about the project. So I guess maybe that's a good time to stop and, and receive questions.
All right, council, questions? What questions do you have, council?
I have several questions.
Go ahead, Valer.
Okay. The Michael Black sent me the schematics and everything and the ADA. And I know that they have a lot of the ADA. The requirements on the slope of the slides are one to 12, you know, for every inch, they have to have a 12-inch fall on the slides. Are y'all sure those have those?
The slides, the slides for a wheelchair-bound child, they, they.
Well, they're not wheelchair-bound, wait a minute. When, okay, so when y'all call, when y'all say something is all-inclusive, that means they can just get up on the footing, okay? I've done a lot of investigating.
Sure.
For it to be handicapped accessible for wheelchairs, you have to put in special slides, special swings and special playthings. I've been talking to Gabe about this. I did talk to the school system here and in Saginaw, we have 2,300 handicapped children. And of those 2,300, 32 of them have wheelchairs. Out of those 32 wheelchairs, there are 18 of them that that wheelchair is an extension of their body. They normally don't get out of that wheelchair. So when I talked to Mr. Black, I asked him about the slides and the kids on wheelchairs. You can transfer a kid on that wheel, from the wheelchair to the slide, but you'll have to have two people, one helping them up here and one down here. And then the sides of the rails are not that big. So if they can't sit up or anything, I don't think they're going to go down that slide very well, okay? So that kind of bothered me. The other thing I talked to him about is that the swings, because they do have one for like a paraplegic child that lays down, but they don't have anything for a wheelchair kid. And I don't know if y'all seen very many wheelchair kids, but the look in their eye when they get to watch somebody do something and not get to do it would break your heart. This playground is not all usable for all handicaps. And I think the citizens need to know that, but I think we can fix it for just a little bit more money. And I'm for that, okay? But then I talked to Gabe and he said, there are several questions. And I don't know, Misty, you might be able to answer these for me. I don't know, Michael couldn't. He said that the tic-tac-toe. He said that the tic-tac-toe board and the racecar board could be played by handicaps. Okay? So, when they pull up to that tic-tac-toe board, are they going to be able to touch that? Are they going to have to lean forward in their wheelchair? Are they going to have to go to the side and do it this way? Do you know how it's...
Probably. That's probably what they're trying to do.
Well, that's not the question I'm asking. I'm asking, is that tic-tac-toe board out enough where they can get to it? Because if it's not, it's not handicap-approved again, once again, for wheelchairs, for wheelchairs is what I'm talking about. You don't know how it's set up?
It will depend on the configuration of the wheelchair and the ability of the child.
Okay. So, it does extend out some away from the edge?
That's, I don't know how far it's up from the surface of the frame of the equipment. I'm saying, reaching it depends on the configuration of the child's wheelchair and the child's ability.
Okay. Because in the schematics, it looks like it's flat up against it.
Hold on. Misty, do you want to come up here and talk?
Yeah. You've seen this, that's why I'm asking.
Misty or Ally or whoever.
Okay. There you go.
And, Misty, happy birthday.
Oh, and it's Todd's birthday, too. Yeah.
Birthday twins.
Okay. So, on the schematics, it looks like to me...
Will you let her introduce herself real quick?
Oh, sure. Sorry. I'm Ally Surface. I'm the vice president of Project Dream Play since 2012.
Okay. Okay. So, it looks like on the schematics that the thing's flat like this. So, if we're talking about the 18 children that use it as an extension to their body, they're not going to lean forward, they're not going to lean sideways, because they're afraid they're going to fall out of that chair. So, is there somewhere that they can put it out where they can roll up under it?
That would have to be discussed with the manufacturer that the bid was awarded to.
Michael?
We would need research on that.
Okay.
I've got a question. What happens when the wheelchair child gets on the wheelchair-accessible ramp, whatever you want to call it?
Platform.
Yeah, platform is fine. And you've got 15 kids up there trying to play on the tic-tac-toe boards or whatever. How is that child going to be able to maneuver that wheelchair around?
Well, I think that to understand the goal of the project is to understand that all children learn from each other if they're able to play together. So, those components that you learn with unstructured play, taking turns, politeness, consideration...
We're talking children, right?
Right.
Taking turns.
That's right.
Right. Okay.
And that's actually how we, as adults, learn, is through unstructured play. When we were children, we learned those negotiation skills, we learned those social skills out on the playground. And so, to be able to provide a space that all children can learn how to do that is just bettering our society, it's bettering our community. And so, those specifics are just part of the adaptation that children will be faced with whenever they're able to do that in this play space.
But this...
Now, the specifics on the size of the child, the size of the wheelchair, the size of the 15 other children that are in that capacity, I mean, I don't think that anybody in this room can determine whether anyone could move in that space.
What you're saying is, we need to make assumptions on how they're going to react, how they're going to act up while they're playing on this platform. So, we also have to make the assumption, then, how the wheelchair-bound child has to do what he needs to do to get that wheelchair turned around so he can just leave there. There's a lot of assumptions for an all-inclusive playground that is not all-inclusive.
Mr. Mayor?
And so, and I'm not against the playground. You need to understand this, okay? My suggestion is, and I've talked to Gabe, is that we do install one or two wheelchair swings, okay? Gabe found a little round thing that two wheelchairs and five other chi, I think it was five children and two wheelchairs, or four children and two wheelchairs, could ride on it. It goes around in a circle. He even found a little tunnel. He couldn't find it before the meeting tonight. But, I think that we need to accommodate those things also, and I know it might cost a little bit more, but I think if we're going to spend this much money on a park to accommodate and call it all-inclusive, y'all need to handle the handicap that are in wheelchairs, too. Because I, it breaks my heart to even say, they already have a bad time at life. And if making them a swing that they can swing and enjoy, or getting them on a twirly thing and let them go around and have some fun, they deserve that. And we would be the only park, or we would be the only city that would have a park like that anywhere close to us. Someone told me, I know there's one somewhere out by Fredericksburg, and someone told me that even the one in Dallas that is actually supposedly for wheelchair-bound kids does not have that.
So, if I could help clarify just a little bit. So, an all-inclusive play, playground is for children to learn from each other of all abilities, and providing a space where there's not limitations. So, they're not isolated into one specific group.
Right.
And, and as, I was kind of answering your question, too, you know, they're able to learn from each other, and that's the purpose of the playground area, is the ability to learn from each other. So, we're not building a handicap park, we're building an all-accessible park, where children can break down those stigmas, and they can learn from each other. So, I just wanted to clarify that portion of it.
I understand that.
And I think adding equipment is a great idea.
I just feel like our handicap needs that.
And it's forward-thinking, and I think this entire board is forward-thinking, and so I can appreciate it. And I appreciate you saying that you understand that there's an increase in cost in that.
There is.
Now, what we've been able to do with Project Dream Play through speaking with the school district over the course since 2012, speaking with the school district, speaking with community organizations and groups, parents with children with mobility or disabilities, issues, parents that have children without limitations, we've been able to create a play space, we believe, that encompasses an area where they can all play together, hand in hand. A child with, without limitations can run alongside a child in a wheelchair and navigate through the areas. If you look at the areas, it is an open space. There is, there is room for a child to slide down a slide, and their friend in a wheelchair to run alongside them in their chair, to play tic-tac-toe, one on each side. Also, there are not just wheelchair-bound students, but there are kiddos, but there are kiddos with sensitivity issues, probably more in the percentage range than wheelchair-bound students.
And I understand that.
And so, we wanted to make sure that this play space was an area for them to learn and grow as well, and play alongside other children.
I need for you to do something for me.
Okay.
I need for you to put yourself in the mind of a child bound to a wheelchair, and he's not going to go anywhere but right there.
Mm-hmm.
And yes, the Project Dream Play parks are phenomenal. I mean, they're really great places for kids. But how would you feel in a wheelchair, and you get to watch everybody else play?
Okay. So, if I can elaborate on that, in 2010, my son, who does not have physical limitations, was playing on a playground that had woodchips. And imagine him, he was running up to the main play structure, running freely, climbing with one leap up onto the platform and sliding down, falling into the woodchips, and then running quickly over to the swings with a friend and playing on a swing. While waiting on, while waiting in line for his turn to swing, he glanced over and noticed another first grader, wheelchair-bound, with nothing to do but play with the woodchips. She was leaning down, and she had a handful of woodchips, and that's all she did. And she did it nearly every day, because there was a seat for her to swing, but she didn't want to swing every time. That wasn't what she wanted to do. Children change their minds. And so, he came home and told us about that experience, not because he felt that there was an injustice being done, not that he even had a point to that story, but to us, it spoke to the character of segregation, that there was no intent to build a structure for all children to play alongside each other. And that's the reason why, when Misty asked me to join this board, I joined the board, because I knew that those circumstances existed for many children in Saginaw. And so, I can tell you, I have identified with that limitation. And every day that we've worked with Project Dream Play, that's been a focal point, and trying to make sure that we're creating a play space with every child in mind.
Gabe, do you have something you want to jump in?
I can't add too much to the description, other than I want to be clear in that what literally levels the playing field in this design is the surface. So, to your point, a child in a wheelchair is a bystander in looking at the periphery at the edge, if they don't have a surface to go onto. So, that surface is expensive. It's about $180,000, $200,000. To Mayor Protem's point, if you instruct us to add more features to this park, I will tell you personally, I'd be very happy. I'm a huge fan of playgrounds. They do great things.
Well, I just feel like the handicap and the wheelchair, they can't...
Well, and I don't...
I don't want them to go up there and just...
I don't want to take away from the group, but I believe the intent of the design was to provide a play space that provides the greatest good for the greatest number.
Yes.
Now, does that mean we can accommodate a playground, 18 folks and children in Saginaw who are wheelchair-bound all the time? Does that mean they can use every single play structure?
No.
No. If you ask us to design a playground of that nature, I commit to you, the cost of that would be millions.
I just think one or two things that they could do, that they could get a smile out of their face.
And I'm with you. I would support that. So, I would recommend to the council that maybe we view the project as design as kind of the base bid. If there's the desire to move forward with that, we can. We can come back, once we have a chance to look at specifications and bring a change order to you that would accommodate some of these other structures, the merry-go-round, whirl structure that would accommodate wheelchairs, as well as the wheelchair swing. So, that's all I wanted to add.
If I could just add, our preference, if you do add equipment, is that you add zero-level surfacing.
If add what?
The surfacing, that you don't add the equipment to the grass or woodchips or...
Well, no, I want this, I want this right next to the other. I want, I want this right next to the other, so that they can feel like they're part of it, too.
Right. Yes, please.
That's what I want.
That'd be our recommendation. There would be the cost of the equipment and the installation, as well as we'd have some minor costs to change the construction document plans. These are all things we can do with your approval.
And in defense of this project, because I've been following this intently for quite a while, I know that Project Dream Play came initially with a huge, very, and had to pare down based on just dollars and cents. So, I know a lot of the things we were talking about, you've discussed, and you've thought about before, but for practicality and to get something on the ground, this is where we, and I understand completely. I mean, we wanted to get something going, which I think is a good idea, to get something going and then build. And I know we've talked about phase two with splash pads, et cetera, et cetera, and which I think is great and something we can build for down the road. But yeah, I want to get something on the ground. I'm impatient, and we've done this a long time, we've been talking about this a long time. I want to get this moving and get some going for all the kids to enjoy, so.
Thank you. And as a board, we just want to say how proud we are that a city is thinking about developmentally fragile students, or children, when thinking about a public park. This, like I said in the beginning, is really forward-thinking, and we believe that education is the way to move a community to their greatest potential. And play is probably one of the biggest components to education. So, really, in essence, when we're talking about dollars and cents, when we're talking about pieces of equipment and non-pieces of equipment, you're really talking about education, and you guys are furthering that in this city, and we appreciate it.
Mary wants to say something.
Oh, Mary, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, Gabe sent us an email when he was on vacation of a playground like this in Kansas City, I think, or Kansas, Mission, Kansas?
Yes.
And the thing that struck me about it was so neat, because every single piece of equipment that they had, everyone would want to play on that. You know, people that didn't have physical disabilities and people that did. So, it did not lend itself at all to be, oh, no, I don't want to play on that piece of equipment. That's for people that can't do this. None of that equipment was like that, and that's what struck me. And I think it'd be great, you know, if we could add some more wonderful things, but I wouldn't want to do so if it would hold up this happening right now. I wouldn't want to have it.
I don't know how it would hold it up, really.
So, but yeah, I think if we're willing to spend more money and improve it even more at some point, that'd be great.
And if I could just add, too, we talk a lot about kids with the playground, but we also know that, I was pleasantly surprised to come in and see community members of a certain generation, and just knowing that they suffer from mobility issues as well, but they still want to play with their grandkids, and they still want to have a sense of community. And so, this actually, the surfacing, 100% would provide those with walkers or limited mobility, the ability to make it to the main structure, to be able to help their grandchild down the slide, or to be able to interact with them. And that quality of life is, is really, you can't put a price tag on it.
Thank you, Ally. Oh, I'm...
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Tried to catch you before you got all the way to the back. Yeah, and I don't know if you're aware, but the Rotary Club supports the Special Olympics Trailblazers here in the ISD. And we had our banquet in May, and we had one young lady that was severely limited, and she wasn't able to participate with the robotic courses that travel around the arena out at the rodeo zone. But, somebody found a rope, and they just dropped the ends of the rope in her hands, and one of the adults just drug her wheelchair round and round, and she just laughed and had a great, great time. So, I agree that, you know, any interaction is a very positive thing. But, the question that I have is, I'm looking at the budget supplement page for the Parks Department, and I'm trying to figure out the math, and I think, I can't remember if this is 10 or 11.
It's probably the financing for the actual award contract.
But, you're, it's talking about the utilities and the insurance and the telephone expenses and the capital outlay.
Yeah, that's on 10. Yeah, that's part of 10.
And you have a total of $553,885. Where does that figure come from? Because the numbers don't add up.
Can I, whoever put the attachment in here just made a copy of the budget page. So, the item that's boxed off is the one that they want you to see here. The $178,675 is what he's trying to say, is the amount budgeted. The total amount that you see, $553,000, is the total budget for the Parks Department for fiscal year 2018, 2019. So, there are pages before this with other line items.
Okay. And the other question I have is, we're looking at a contribution from Project Dream Play of $143,000. Is that correct? Well, I was looking at your website today, and y'all have $160,258.37 in contributions for a difference of $17,258.37. So, where is that $17,000 going?
So, we can tell you that we have two donors that have pledged $7,500 after, after this completion tonight. And so, we have $143,519.66 cash on hand. We've paid $11,500 to LaTerra already, a LaTerra architects. When we had a bid from them, it was, correct me if I'm wrong, $52,000, but I think the city was able to negotiate that down to $43,000, which hints the reason that they had to pay $32,000 to LaTerra. So, I think that takes your figure to seventeen, too.
So, if you paid eleven thousand, that's still six thousand dollars. I'm just trying to get the math to add up here.
I'm seeing if that is the two donors that we have pledged, but we don't have their cash on hand yet.
Okay.
And recall, counsel...
Would that eventually come to the city to help offset the costs of this? Because that's not written in the paperwork.
What was your question?
Sorry.
I didn't hear you just now.
Oh, the, there's, you were talking about eleven thousand dollars that was paid to, was it LaTerra? And then, well, there's still about six thousand dollars delta still between what I've seen pledged to you and then what you guys have agreed to pay the city.
We're holding in reserve funds to fund the donor wall and the picket fence and uphold our commitments that we've made to the donors.
That's not in the eight thousand dollars that's, or is that part of the eight?
The eight thousand, that's part of the eight thousand, the eight thousand, the eight thousand is pulled out of that forty-three. It's already taken out of that.
Out of the forty-three or out of the hundred and sixty?
We have one forty-three plus eight.
Okay.
Basically. And we're holding on to the eight, so that we can uphold our commitments to the donors.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Gabe, anything else you want to add?
I put the city attorney on the spot. Could we award a contract as proposed with a change order up to a certain amount?
Up to twenty-five percent of the project total cost.
Okay.
Yes. Otherwise, I mean, you could still add to the project, but you would have to bid out.
A separate...
Correct. Correct.
So, if it's the council's pleasure, I would request that the project as bid be awarded and that you let us know a dollar amount, so four hundred eighty thousand, you know, well over a hundred thousand and...
Hundred and twenty thousand.
Hundred and twenty thousand, we would be eligible to award tonight if that's, or some other amount, fifty thousand. You tell us. I think we can accommodate the, the swing.
I did a little research this week, as the questions were coming up, and the swing set and then the whirl, the tilt-the-whirl sort of structure, probably just back of the envelope, thirty thousand apiece, plus another thirty-one hundred for LaTerra to modify the design drawings. So, sixty-three thousand, so...
What about surface? Additional surface?
Surfacing is included in that number.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Like Gabe said, that's seventeen dollars a square foot is what the surfacing runs, so...
So, we're looking at sixty thousand, sixty?
Sixty to seventy. If you gave us that range, then we can make something work. I would point out, too, that have reservations about the swing set, just because I've heard from at least three different individuals, professionals, about the liability or the concerns over injuries for the use of that piece of equipment. So, I mean, I would hope you would give us some discretion to maybe find alternate pieces of equipment that would satisfy the requirements you've stated tonight. But if not, we can go with the, it's just it's such a bulky, heavy piece of equipment that people can get hit by it as it's swinging, so that's a concern.
Okay. Go ahead.
I also heard that with the swings, because I talked with some people last year at the TML, they said that those actually have to be fenced off because of the size of the swing and the potential danger.
It'd have to be off separate.
And I think that kind of counters the interaction that we're looking at for Project Dream Play. If we have to, you know, fence that area off.
You don't want to segregate the kids, yeah?
Correct.
All right, so maybe we look at the, a motion that includes the bid, which is four eighty-two, plus an additional, let's say, up to seventy thousand dollars for the new...
Wheelchair accessible.
Equipment as discussed, and allow staff some time to do a little investigation in this. We would approve that, okay. So, whatever you found, we'd approve, but yeah, I think that sounds... If so, I'll entertain a motion to say something like that.
Well, Mayor, I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Question?
Yes, Mary.
So, by making the motion that way, do we think that will delay the beginning of this at all? I mean, it won't delay, okay, good.
No, I don't think, okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
Undertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we award the contract with the stipulation of the change order, or whatever. Do I need to do both of them? Okay. For the Willa Creek Park Playground.
As presented.
As presented.
With the, with the additional up to...
With the stipulation.
The change order up to seventy thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
I second that.
What?
I was just going to say that the follow-on isn't truly necessary, because it's not binding. We would have to bring it back anyway, so...
Excellent, all right. So, Valerie made the motion?
I second that motion.
Charles second. Excellent. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent. Moving on, number, now we need to do number eleven. And eleven is considering action regarding agreement with Project Dream Play.
Mayor, I make a motion for the, to, oh my gosh, to approve the...
Agreement.
Agreement with Project Dream Play regarding, regarding the Willa Creek Park Playground as presented.
I second.
Charles second, okay. All those in favor? Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you all. And staff and Project Dream Play, thanks for your hard work. There's a lot has come into this, so we appreciate all the efforts of many folks. And let's not forget Mr. Farr.
Texting. He chose not to come back.
He will. All right, so at seven fifty-six, I recessed up into workshop. I have number thirteen, fiscal year nineteen twenty, Budget Workshop Enterprise Fund and Enterprise Escrow Fund. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. This, throughout the spring and summer, we've been talking about budget issues and going fund by fund. Tonight, we're going to discuss the Enterprise Fund and the Enterprise Escrow Fund. The Enterprise Fund is the fund that we account for the water and wastewater operations of the city. And this fund is where we collect the fees that people pay on their monthly water bill and the expenses that we incur to provide water and wastewater service to our customers. The, the budget summary that you see before you just summarizes the major changes that we're proposing for next year. The city of Fort Worth is going to decrease their rate that we, that they charge us to purchase water by ten point four-nine percent and decrease the wastewater treatment service by three point four-four percent. We have put together the budget to include...
When was the last time both those went down from Fort Worth? That's just, okay.
That's okay. I was going to answer the question for you, but... It's, it's been a while. I've got a chart coming up that shows you, I think it was two thousand, fiscal year twelve thirteen, that they both went down. So, it's, it's been a while. But we're proposing to pass along half of that rate decrease on the water side. If we do that, it will result in a savings from the average homeowner of two dollars and twenty-one cents a month in their, on their water bill. The, the biggest part of any budget is the personnel costs, and the proposed expenditures include a salary increase of three percent for staff, and it also includes the full year funding of the TMRS rate increase. That was approved last year. That went into effect on January first of twenty nineteen. Next fiscal year, we'll have a full twelve months of that increase. It also includes some equipment replacement, a service truck replacement, the replacement of a sewer main camera, some software upgrades, and rehab of five booster pumps. It also includes some new technology that we really don't have a choice. The meters that we currently use are being phased out, and we can no longer replace them with the same meters. So, we're having to move to the cellular technology. The budget includes replacing half of the meters next year at a cost of six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and half in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Along with the cost of the actual meters comes the service, which the city will pay eighty-one cents per month per meter. So, the amount included for that for this first year is thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Eventually, the cellular technology will allow customers to see their usage, not have to call us and...
The way they'll do on their phones, right? That's how, eventually it'll get to you.
Yep, or their computer, or however they wish to look at it, so they can monitor their own usage, you know, day by day, instead of waiting to...
Real-time monitoring of the user, right?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. And it will, it will have some efficiencies, too, whereas right now, we have the monthly meter reading, the guys that go out and the radio-controlled reading. This will be instantaneous right from City Hall. We could look at any point in time and see what, what the readings are. So, there are advantages, advantages to that, but the technology is costly. Included in the budget is also the completion of the design that we began this year and construction next year for the sixteen-inch water line along Saginaw Boulevard. This is going to be funded with impact fees. So, the, the fund, the other fund that we're going to talk about tonight, where we collect and account for impact fees, we'll transfer the money to fund this project into the Water Wastewater Fund. So, we've collected the fees already to pay for this project. The, the other project that's included in this fund for next year is construction of the Fairmount twelve-inch sewer rehab. We've started it this year, or we've been engineering it and, and will be, it'll be pushed back again until next year to actually do the construction. And that's going to be fund balanced. We have the FM one fifty-six utility relocation. Again, that was budgeted in this current year, but we're not going to get to the completion of it this fiscal year, so it'll be pushed until next fiscal year. And then, we have a new project that's required because of the railroad adding a line, adding on to the train tracks, and we're going to have to relocate some utilities for four hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And then, the last big project in this fund is completion of the INI repairs. So, about every other year, we do the INI study, and then the following year, we take care of the issues that are found in the study to solve the INI inflow and infiltration problem. So, we have a hundred and forty-six thousand in there to complete the repairs from the last study. This next slide just shows you how we try to pass along savings as well as increases in line with what the city of Fort Worth does to us. So, in the last five years, the city of Fort Worth has increased their water rates twenty-five point eight-seven percent. We've increased by ten percent. The wastewater rates have increased by eighteen point three-five percent, and we've passed along eight percent of that. This slide just shows how we compare an average residential water bill, and actually, our average is about eight thousand, but the survey that Texas Municipal League does, does it based on five thousand gallons. So, based on five thousand gallons, our customers pay approximately twenty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. We are the third lowest of these other cities that are also customers of the city of Fort Worth for water and wastewater service.
So, you tell us we need to raise our rates? Is that what you're saying, Kim?
I'm just saying that our citizens get a, a good value.
Okay.
And then, the Enterprise Escrow Fund, again, it's, there's not a lot to this fund. We just have to account for impact fees separately to show that we're doing what we are supposed to be doing with the impact fees that we collect, and so that's why it's separate. What you see in this fund is just the transfer of the one million eighty-six thousand dollars from the impact, for the Escrow Fund to the Water Wastewater Fund to pay for that water line. So, that's the, the Water and Wastewater Fund and the Escrow Fund. Are there any questions?
So, just back to the, the overall decrease in the rate, five percent.
Uh-huh.
That covers all cost increases, operational cost increases and infrastructure costs.
That's correct.
Wonderful. Tight run ship. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Kim. Moving on, I have number fourteen, Knolls Drive Conceptual Plan Update. This is Dolph Johnson, but I think we have a VIP here for that. Ms. Dana Schumar.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Dana Schumar, for the record, I'm here to update you on the Knolls Drive conceptual design that we were approved to do begin in March, late March of this year, to get some preliminary design done, conceptual design done, to understand the scope of the project and the drainage impacts and the costing, so if you are going to move forward with potential bond election, that you all understand, more detailed cost versus what was in the CIP plan, which is a higher planning level. So, we've got, done quite a bit of work over the last couple of months to get this up to date. And Trenton, you have some handouts if you want to give them, or do I get a click? Okay. So, we've got some handouts, too, because I know it's hard to see on the screen. So, you go to the next. Oh, I have the clicker. I've got it, so I'm good. So, I'm going to go over just scope overview of what we've completed over the last couple of months and talk about the overall phasing plan, and then get into the details of each phase, and then open it up for questions. The limits of the project are from Longhorn Drive up to Edwards Drive, and we got some design survey, and we did a very detailed drainage evaluation and preliminary design. As you all know, there's been some drainage concerns on the north end of Knolls with a lot of those subdivisions having flooding issues, so we looked, we evaluated that in great detail, and also along the park, there's some flooding concerns. And then, we did a preliminary roadway plan and profile. Its existing section of Knolls is a ditch section, you know, roadway with ditch section. We looked at doing curb and gutter, internalizing the storm drain. And then, we looked at intersection layouts for each of the intersections, which I'll get into in a second. Sidewalk locations along the park, we were going to keep the sidewalk, and then we're going to add some sidewalk where it makes sense along the corridor. And you'll be able to see that in, when I do the overview. And then, due to the drainage design, significant drainage improvements that are needed, there are some utilities that need to be relocated, such as sanitary sewer and water. And then, we did some, or we did some detailed construction cost estimating for this. So, we also did a traffic study along the corridor. We looked at what the, how many lanes needed to be along Knolls, along with intersection evaluation. So, the traffic study looked, evaluated that two lanes could work along the whole corridor, but from Longhorn to the north end of the park, there was some delay in the southbound movement, so it wasn't enough to, it wasn't detrimental, but it was enough that we thought it made sense to add a third lane to get people that want to turn left into the subdivision, see the cul-de-sacs and stuff there, to get them out of the through lanes to improve the traffic flow. And there is room along the park for the extra space, because you don't have to get right away, because you can use a city's park land for that. So, we set it, designed it for three-lane section from Longhorn to just the park limits, and then two lanes going to the north. And then, the intersection valuation, as has already been kind of talked about a little bit earlier, is we evaluated the existing condition, and then also the future build-out twenty years from now, what intersection control made sense for W.J. Bowes, Wes McElroy and, McElroy and Longhorn. And Wes McElroy and W.J. Bowes function better as a, as a roundabout than they do as a traffic signal. I don't want to get into too many details, but the way you measure delay for a traffic signal versus a roundabout, you're looking at twenty-five seconds or so less delay per vehicle with a roundabout than you are for a traffic signal. So, we went ahead and moved forward with the roundabout for discussion purposes. It's not by any means set in stone, done deal that a roundabout's going to happen. It's just preliminary design and something that we wanted to make sure that we designed and get conservative approach for the costing for the bond election. And then, Longhorn, we just looked at as traffic signals, since there's already, Longhorn's already built ultimately. And then, Longhorn, we just looked at as traffic signals, since there's already, Longhorn's already built ultimately. It doesn't make sense to rip that up and do a roundabout if, even if the traffic study says so. So, we just looked at a signal, and a round, a signal will work in, in great, in the ultimate condition there. So, moving forward to the phasing, we broke, we changed the phasing a little bit from what you have seen in the past with the CIP. In the past, Phase One was the south end of Longhorn, Longhorn to the north, and then, Phase Two and Phase Three. We're, we're, we've broken it into phasing of going from the north end to the south due to drainage concerns. So, north is to the right on the picture here. The green is Phase One. The purplish color is Phase Two, and then, Phase Three would be the blue, the blue. And as you can see, the total cost, just construction costs alone are around eighteen million. Previously, before we did this evaluation, we were looking at around eleven million for just construction costs. So, as you can see, there's a seven-million-dollar differential, which is a good thing that we went ahead and did this evaluation, because the drainage itself was what the biggest factor was. Seven-million-dollar increase, there was about five-and-a-half to six million that was just in drainage costs. So, it was just-
Is it carriage, is it carriage lane where it floods? Is that where we've had so much flooding problem that we've had a-
Uh, Commons.
Commons, yeah, the Commons.
Carriage, okay. That's what we've seen. And I have another question, just on the, the Edwards piece there, going to the north. When was that done? Because that, that's been re, because we're not doing that piece, because it was redone years ago, right?
Yeah, well, we-
Edwards to Bailey-Boswell, when was that redone?
I don't know. I'm not sure at all, do you know?
Because we're, we're not going from Edwards to Bailey-Boswell.
Oh, that section, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Because, because that was done how many years ago, right?
Before I got here.
Okay, so-
Part of the subdivision.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah. It's thirty-plus years ago.
But it, that, that, my point is that area does not need to be done, right?
No, it's, it's, it's a wider, it's a wider section than what you see from that point south. It, of course, it needs regular maintenance, resurfacing, things like that. But Dana may be able to tell you where the break points are, as far as where they need to pick up drainage coming from the north and south.
Okay, so it's a drainage question really on that?
Yes, we'll get into it when we get into the detailed phasing. So, just the point of this was total eighteen million dollars. We obviously needed to break it down into phases like we had in the CIP. So, we broke it into three major phases, so, moving forward. So, yeah, so the Phase One, as like you said, see here, is original plans was actually to stop, I forget what street.
Got a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
All right, go ahead. It's a workshop, so.
You're at the, the roundabout at McElroy and Knolls?
Yes, sir.
Even on a ball field right there, how are you going to get people across the street?
From vehicles or walking?
Walking.
There's crosswalks. You can do a crosswalk. I can, actually, Dolph, can you unhide the last slides? I actually have a slide for this.
And those crosswalks can be lit, just like what we have by the fire station, right?
Multiple things you can do to enhance the crosswalk.
And we can put a stop, we can put a stop traffic, red light.
You could put a red light, a PHB, they call it. You could put a raised crosswalk. You could put those LED yield signs. You could put the art, those push button that we have on Bailey-Boswell and Basswood now. You could put those in, so, yeah.
Since he asked that-
What's wrong with what we have now? I mean, I think that would be safer than-
But since he asked that question about the roundabout.
The roundabout.
If we did put the roundabout in there, would we move that light somewhere else? Is that ours to move, or?
It's Saginaw's to move, yes. I think it was moved from another intersection to this.
That's what I thought it was, but I just wanted to make sure, I just wondered.
Yes, so, I mean, what's there today is, look back, what's there today is just an interim fix. It's working for the next year or two, but I'll be on that, we're showing the needs to, you need to add some turn lanes on Knolls or McElroy.
I mean, this even goes back to what the gentleman was talking about earlier, about if they do build this rehab facility across the street from the ball field, they're going to be taking, and I hate to say it this way, old people across, people needing rehab across the street, right in front of a roundabout.
Yes.
But they have crosswalks.
Yes, there's crosswalks. So, this image here in front of you is just a blow up.
Well, you can stop traffic coming one direction, but what about the people coming around from the other way? Because this is a roundabout.
I think it's synchronized, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I can, I can try to answer your question, and then, I'm sure you may not answer your question the way you want it to, but I-
I'm thinking faster than you can talk, is what it is.
No, I mean, so this is a picture of the blow up of the roundabout north is up. So, this, we're shown having a crosswalk across each leg, as you can see. And you're only have, if you're a pedestrian, walking, you're only having to look one direction as you cross, and then, you get to a median that has a refuge. It's wide enough for somebody pushing a stroller, somebody pushing a wheelchair, anything like that, to stop in before having to cross again. So, if you're, if traffic may be exiting the roundabout, you just look left. No one's coming, you get to the median. And then, if people are approaching, you just have to look right, because no one's coming from the left. You see what I'm saying? When you get to the intersection. I actually have a better picture, I should have just- I was prepared, I was prepared for, oh, there's one more to unhide. Oh, sorry. So, that's how you appro, it's less space where you have to walk across as a pedestrian. And then, as a driver, there's less decision as well, because you're looking in front of you, see if pedestrians there. And then, if there's not, you continue on to the yield line, and then, you just look left, and no one's coming. You proceed under the roundabout. But if it's a traffic signal, you have multiple decisions to make. So, this isn't a graphic of a traffic signal or an always-stop condition versus a roundabout, how many conflicting point movements there are for pedestrians. So, on the left, you'll see, you have a potential for conflict for a red, right turn on red, or in green, sorry, red light turning conflict, left turn on green and red light. So, there's thirty-two conflicting potential conflict points at a traffic signal, but at a roundabout, there's only eight. So, that's some of the safety, FHWA has said roundabouts are a proven safety countermeasure for pedestrian and bicyclists. They state that they're safer for pedestrians. So, I understand the, the sense of security of it's a stop light, people have to stop. I understand that, but they're- Yes, right, exactly. And that's one of the biggest concerns and fatalities that have happened with pedestrians at traffic signals, is people turning left on green when they have a green ball. They're just paying attention to the traffic, not looking for pedestrians, and that's where the accidents have happened. So, I understand the, the concerns with that. And so, just, that's something I just wanted to address, is like, yes, there are concerns with any intersection. Even a stop control intersection, people run red, red stop signs, they don't completely stop. There's potential for-
I've got a stop sign in front of my house, and wait stops in that as well.
So, you're helping me with understanding, yeah. So, like, there's always going to be concerns with safety with pedestrians, whatever you, but roundabouts have been proven to be safe for, for that case. You have a question here?
So, that's just a matter of educating the public.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And that-
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I know, but, but I'm surprised by that, but I understand it after you explained it, so.
So, from, so what we, we would do if we're moving forward, if whatever happens tonight, whatever direction is, is at this point, Saginaw has not put any roundabouts in. You know, Fort Worth has some right on the outskirts of Saginaw. There, people consider them Saginaw's roundabouts on Marine Creek and Old Decatur, but they're not. So, we would want to do public engagement at this point to educate people and to get feedback, so, for sure. Does that help answer that question? Okay, can I go back to?
Keep going.
All right, thank you.
Let me, let me clarify one benefit. You said twenty-five seconds per car improvement over a-
Roughly.
Signalized intersection. During an eight-month school year period, that's a hundred minutes per car. That's a hundred minutes of your life that you get back per car.
That's because we live right by that area.
And then, the other thing to note from a roundabout versus a signal, a signal's always operating, so you're going to have to, even if there's low traffic period, you're having to wait for that cycle. The roundabout, you're not. So, that's another, like, helps with the traffic flow when it's only needed for a peak period. A roundabout's so much more efficient for the everyday driver that doesn't have to wait for that thirty to forty second, maybe forty second usually, probably, at the middle.
So, what you're saying then is you pick your times of the day to go through a roundabout.
Roundabouts are fine for any time of the day.
Once I get the hang of it, it'll work.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, continuing on. So, the first phase is the major drainage section, like you mentioned about a lot of the flooding. So, there's a pretty significant storm system. What Dolph was alluding to is we actually extended our limits a little bit further and newer from the original plan was, because of some of the drainage that is there. Just no, I forget the original limits. When we expanded Edwards, what was the original cutoff, the prior, prior street? Normandy Street, yes. So, we extended it a little bit further, because there's some significant water ponding right there where that inlet system is, so. It's a pretty significant storm drain system. It's a twelve-by-four box as you get towards the park of how much water is going to be going through this. It's a pretty, Knolls is pretty flat, so we don't have a whole lot of grade to play with. That's why the box is so big, so that's the cost. We do propose a roundabout at WJ Boz. It's a single lane. It's going to be a, what we call a compact roundabout, which is a smaller footprint. It's about a ninety-five-foot circle, which the roundabouts that you guys see right next to you at WJ, or at Marine Creek and Longhorn, and then, the one at Cromwell-Marine Creek and Marine Creek are about a hundred-and-forty-foot circle. This would be about a ninety-five-foot circle, and it's enough for a school bus fire truck and a car pulling a trailer, or, you know, a truck pulling a trailer can get through easily. It's not intended for big, large trucks. It's a neighborhood.
Is there a name there?
Truck, roundabout.
I guess so.
And then, sidewalk along the west side, and the total cost for this is six-point-seven million dollars for construction cost. Any questions on Phase One before I go to Phase Two?
There's a little retention thing on both sides of that.
I have a question.
On the, on the roundabout on WJ Boz, there's a little retention on both sides of that. Is there ninety-five fit there to do that?
There's, there's room to fit it, we would have, I don't have a blow up with me, but, yeah, we, we could fit it within the right way, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. I was just worried about those two little, you know where I'm talking about.
Yeah, but we're going to internalize that storm drain, like the ditches, yeah. Those are going to become big box culverts then.
Okay, okay.
Just on the south end, handling all of our watershed, I'm, I'm assuming this will become curved. Okay, so, we're going to be draining at the far south end? Does it look like it'll all come out down? So, are we going to, are we considering some kind of retention at the south end of the park at this point, or not?
No, I mean, it, this is, the creek can handle that much flow, so, no, we're going to do some-
No fish pond.
And hats been, to line the channel, get it there without, to help with erosion conditions, issues, but. And then, I don't, I mean, there could be some consideration at some other time to do, look at a global detention and helping move in the floodplain limits, but that's not part of the scope at this time.
So, and this question's for Gabe. Gabe, at some point in time, I know we've discussed marrying the Knolls project and the parks together, and potentially considering a water feature at the south end of the park. Is that being considered in the parks?
Do you recall?
Nope.
Dr. [inaudible].
Yeah, so-
We've had discussions about-
Thank you. We've had discussions about providing some sort of water features, part of park amenity that would have benefits to the storm drain, but they would be standalone projects. Whatever we would do in the park would have no benefit to the storm drain and vice versa, but. And, and that's always something that we can include in the park scopes as the committee gets into that.
Sure, we just don't need it for engineering purposes.
We don't need it for the storm drain. It has no benefit whatsoever.
I, I think if I recall, too, isn't some of that subject waters the US, which is, you know, stormwater.
It's a lot easier to get around in this administration than it was in the last administration.
Right.
Well, there's, there's also water rights, so that's-
Yeah, it's, it's tricky.
You're impounding water, so you're-
Sure.
Yeah, so it's-
But just in consideration, I know this is getting into weeds, but flow lines, when we're getting at that far end, if we're thinking about making sure that the flow lines are high enough to accommodate a water feature maybe in the future, as high as possible.
You can accommodate one, it's just, it's just the permitting process would be laborious, so, but, but it's doable.
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't want to hamstring us where our flow line discharge point is too low, and now, we have this ridiculously deep pond.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay, makes sense, okay. So, moving on, so the next phase would be, we just continued going to the south. This is from the northern, north of the park limits, which is about four-hundred feet south of Woodcrest Drive to McElroy. Includes two storm systems, as you can see in that light blue. This would be the three-lane section, which is one lane in each direction with a center turn lane, and then, the roundabout at McElroy. It's sized to be two lanes in each direction along McElroy, but it only needs to be one lane north and south on Knolls. So, it's kind of what you call a hybrid roundabout. If any of you have driven Heritage Trace Parkway west of thirty-five, there's one right there. That's two lanes, and then, it has one lane coming into it, so. And the size of this is about a hundred-and-forty-foot circle, which is very close to the same size of the one at Longhorn and Marine Creek Parkway. And then, we also show adding some pedestrian crossings, which is those RFBs, like the push-button crossings for people to cross from the subdivision to the park. So, we showed two locations for that. And the total cost estimate for this section is four-point-eight million. And then, the final phase is Phase Three, which is from Wes McElroy to Longhorn. This includes a three-lane section like we talked about already, a signal at Longhorn, sidewalk along the east side to be able to allow, and then, in three, I think we have three locations that we have pedestrian crossings to the park, maybe two planned for now, to allow people to get to the park. And then, there are four storm systems on this one, which is indicated there in that light blue color. And there's also a, it's hard to see on this, on that, but there's an energy transfer gas line that crosses Knolls just south of McElroy that we're not sure exactly. It's not very deep, so we're going to have to do something with it. So, we planned for some budget for encasing that line. So, the total for this cost estimate is six-point-four million dollars. Know what that, for the question?
Breaking it up by dollars per phase, but we're going to do all the phases.
Yeah, I think it's for just having chunks, sizable chunks of, so it's like eighteen million dollars is a lot to bite off in one time. So, we phased it out that way.
We can't do, we can't do Phase One and not do Phase Two and do Phase Two. We can't do, we're going to do all phases or no phases.
We just broke it into phases, just if you wanted to phase it out, or, like we did on Bailey-Boswell, right? We had three different phases on Bailey-Boswell. We did it all at once, or did it all, but we just did it in phases.
Questions, counsel?
So, in, in these cost projections that I see in the CIP pertaining to the three phases, is there escalation built into the numbers that are downstream? For example, if we're completing one in the next fiscal year, then the following fiscal year, did we add some money to it?
We haven't added escalation yet. We just were using twenty-nineteen dollars. We didn't know what direction it was going to be for there, but yes, it would probably need to be, once we know what year-
So, it's more like nineteen-five?
Could be, yeah, yes.
Instead of eighteen? It's probably more like nineteen-five, just to prepare the council for a phased construction over three or four years.
Other questions?
Any questions for Dana? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item number fifteen, master parks plan concept for that, says Kim Lee Horn. Howdy.
Hello.
Introduce yourself, please.
Yes, I'm Catherine McGill, and I'm with Kim Lee Horn. I'm a licensed architect and licensed irrigator. So, I'm here to present on the city of Saginaw Parks. All right, so outline for the presentation, I'm going to go over project overview, park usage chart, which is the feedback that we received from the public and city feedback. Go over the park concepts, so we have the park concept summary, summary of the public feedback for each park, cost estimate related to each park, and then, room for any questions. So, project overview, so scope of work. We were hired to go over all of the existing parks within the city, so we did a site analysis. We visited each park, which you have seven parks total, analyzed, took pictures, did inventory of all the existing park features within the city. We also, from that data, we gathered existing condition maps. So, we have those maps, if you would like to see them. They're not in the presentation, but we do have them. And then, from there, we did a conceptual park design. So, we came up with concept plans for the park improvements. We came up with cost estimates for each park improvement. From there, we presented to the Parks Advisory Board and to the city, and we gathered feedback from them. And then, from there, we refined the concepts and costs associated with each park. So, during the concept process, we gathered public feedback. So, that involved going to the Parks Advisory Meeting, and that was on June tenth. So, there, we had feedback from about eight to ten citizens that came and provided post-it notes and comment cards on each of the park concepts. And then, we took all of the concepts and did an online voting tool, and it was on JotForm. So, we had things like the most visited park, the least visited park. We wanted responses on the concepts overall from each citizen who participated. So, from that, we gathered about eighty-seven individual responses, and the city also posted the concepts on the Facebook website. And that's where we gathered about a couple more responses. So, the goals of our scope for this entire thing were to go over all of the major park improvements that the city needs to develop a parks master plan and update it. We wanted to identify the most wanted areas in the city for those improvements and the most needed areas for the park system. And then, we also wanted to just enhance the functionality- And then we also wanted to just enhance the functionality, aesthetics and quality of life for the residents, for the city. So this is your overall city with your existing parks. So you've got seven parks total and then to the right are the different park types and then your existing parks broken up into those types. So your neighborhood park is roughly zero to three acres, so you've got four existing parks that fall within that category. These are usually typically small in size, they function for mostly the neighborhood with which it resides. Then moving on to community park, it's about four to sixteen acres, so a little bit larger. So you've got one park, the William Houston Park, that falls within this category. This was, this type of park is usually a medium to large park and it serves larger sections of the city, not necessarily the city as a whole, but it can also be a destination park. So someone to William Houston, I know a lot of athletics and soccer's played there. And then the last is the regional parks, that's usually sixteen plus acre in size, so it's the larger of the parks and you've got two of those. And what's nice about that is you've got them on both sides of the city, so it serves your city as a whole, but it also serves residing communities and that can also be serving larger amenities for people to come to the city to participate. So moving on, this is our feedback from the public, so this is our park usage graph. So the green represents people who most visit those parks and then the orange represents the least visited. So you can kind of see the breakdown, looks like Willow Creek is your most visited park, understandable, and then Highland Station is next and then Opal Joe is actually pretty up there too, so.
Did the survey go into detail as to why it was more visited or less visited? Any feedback on that?
No, it didn't. And a lot of the responses we received, multiple people checked multiple parks, so we were hoping we would just get one parked, but we kind of had to break it down on the responses that we received, one or two responses from, but we just had a note in there that said, which park do you visit the most often and which park do you visit the least often? So we could kind of figure out where people visit the most and the least.
Do you think with a response of less than a hundred people that this even gives you any close to an accurate picture of park usage? Because I live up the street from Opal Joe Jennings and I see kids there all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it would, it would have been nice to have more feedback, but we were very happy with how many responses we did receive. I think Willow Creek gets the most because you have so many amenities in that park and you have so many people that can visit. Opal Joe, I think, is in a really great location, so, and it has a playground and pavilion and grill, so it really depends on what's offered in that park and we tried to use that moving forward with the concept development to enhance the other parks, to increase visitation in those parks. That was the goal. All right, so now I'm going to go through the Willow Creek Park exhibit, so some of the features that we've got here, we have the Dream Play Playground and Splash Pad to the north. You've got improved parking, baseball practice fields, sand volleyball courts, inclusive playgrounds, I know that's been discussed this evening, soccer fields, pavilion and picnic areas, pickleball courts, improved seating areas, and then we also discussed with public feedback on nature learning garden type thing. So the responses from our public feedback are the next, this next slide. So wanted to also make a comment that the far left bar says concept updates, so these were in relation to people who just said, I love the concept. They didn't really say, oh, I really liked the basketball courts or, oh, I really liked the baseball courts. They just said overall, they really liked the concept updates that we provided. And then you can see the blue represents the most wanted features and the yellow represents the most disliked features. And we based this off of if we received two or more responses, so that's why the blue, you have a lot more most wanted features on this one. So biggest thing was the splash pad for Willow Creek and then you've got playground additions and updates, additional improved restrooms and drinking fountains, enhanced trail, and it all goes down from there. Disliked features, you had additional parking on that one as well, additional sand volleyball court and additional basketball courts were disliked. So total cost estimate ranged between twelve and fourteen million, so these costs are based off of our concept plan amenities that we proposed, but then it's also, we also included the most wanted features that the public would like to see. So in case we did not include it in our concept plan, we wanted to show the money that would be needed for that amenity. And also wanted to make note that the costs are relative and so like as the bond committee decides on features and priorities, we can refine the cost estimates based on their decision for the park system. These numbers that are up here are based on construction costs plus mobilization, some indirect costs, contingency, but then can also be constructed as standalone, but if you decide you want to build several things at once, that cost could go down a little bit roughly. And then these numbers do not include design fees because we haven't refined the scope for each park yet.
So the twelve to fourteen million does not include design fee?
It does not.
Okay. That's a real cost, it's a soft cost, but it's a real cost, right? So fourteen million, between probably ten percent of that cost would be design cost?
Roughly, yes.
One point four million, okay.
For all of the updates and most wanted features that were voted on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on to Highland Station, this one, we included playground updates, included a splash pad on this one, so this is your other regional park in the city, pickleball courts, basketball courts, additional parking and restrooms. And here's the public feedback, so biggest thing on this one was the splash pad. The citizens really want a splash pad. And then next we have the concept updates, which I made note that these were comments that people just said, we love it, we don't really have, they didn't really provide or elaborate any more detail, they just loved the concept that we provided. And then for the Highland Station, this is our total cost estimate, eight and a half to ten million. This is the concept plan amenities and the most wanted features as well.
So is it just me or is this park kind of our city's redheaded stepchild?
Could be.
You know, how it's located and where it's put, it just doesn't get the visibility of Willow Creek Park. I mean, it's a great park, you've got to, you've got to really want it, go into it.
I put a skate park in this park.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one, that's one feature that exists at that park that doesn't exist anywhere else, but, I mean, I, I've never visited that park and I hate to say that. I'll probably go by and look at it.
I say, unique to, yeah.
Yeah.
And we have the dog parks there too.
It's a, it's a unique situated park. I think they use the trails more than.
But you've got to go, you've got to really go down there and if you drive by, you may not even notice there, it's that big, yeah.
Well, in this concept too, we provided access from, is that Blue Mound? Yeah. Blue Mound Road and created an additional parking that's kind of nestled interior to the park, so really wanted to try to get people into the park because we realized that parking was off on the outskirts and probably most people didn't travel down into the park, so wanted to utilize that access from that road, get another parking lot in there, large parking, but then we also provided sidewalk trail access all the way to, what's the far road over there? Basswood, yeah.
Excuse me. I had a couple of constituents talk to me that I think the builders were supposed to put a bridge in over a drainage area in that park and they've been there for several years and it's never showed up. Would this improvement include, and to be quite honest, I don't exactly know where it is and I haven't been over there to look, but it's a pretty deep ravine through there and they said they were promised by the builder that a bridge would go in.
A pedestrian bridge to get over?
A pedestrian bridge, correct, to allow residents to.
Yeah, I've, I've had conversations with, with neighbors along behind that creek and there is a public access corridor from the street to the, to the ravine, but the location is horrible, there's a, there's a drainage outfall right at that location, so if you built a bridge, your peers would essentially be at the outfall of the drainage pipe, so it, it might be a good proposal just to vacate that access and provide alternate access like Kate's, Katherine's proposing.
So out of curiosity, a hundred and eighty space parking lot, what, what drives that?
So that drives the, all of the court improvements that we included, so, um, if I go back to the.
But there, there are tennis courts, right?
Well, we, so we included tennis courts, basketball courts and pickleball courts and kept the skate park over there, so we added more parking for skate park access, but then you, we also added the splash pad, so we included the longer parking lot to accommodate all of the users that might be using the splash pad. So if you didn't necessarily want to go to that area or to the playground over there, you could park in the other parking lot and then utilize the fields or the tennis courts or that playground to the south as well.
So am I, am I seeing this right, there is an existing parking lot that is just maybe to the west of the proposed rubberized surface playground area, is that an existing parking lot?
Yes, that is.
How many spaces are there?
Roughly, probably thirty, I'd have to count. We left that there because it, we wanted to use the access drive down into the splash pad, but I would say probably roughly thirty, twenty to thirty spaces.
My only comment here is that, I mean, combined between the three lots, it's pushing a hundred and seventy spaces. Maybe a lot of parking and we're not taking advantage of some area maybe for some additional amenity, just, just initial comment. It's a lot of parking and a lot of people are going to be walking to this, this park, so just, just a comment.
Okay, thank you.
And let's think about all these features, these, we won't do all these features, we'll do some iteration of these features, it'd sort of be like a buffet, we'll pick and choose when we go to, we go to some kind of bond package, so just keep that in mind that not every single one of these we will have to pay for because we're not going to do them all. What we're going to do, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's the sort of way to look at it, we're not sure.
If it's phased, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Speaking to the parking issue, Rick, didn't we back several years ago talk to the EMSID about events in and around the soccer field? We could use their parking lot over there by, what is that, building six, I believe it is? You know, because there's a gate there and they said as long as we didn't trash it.
This, this is Highland Station Park we're talking about.
Oh, okay, Highland Station, I'm thinking of.
William Houston Park.
William Houston, I'm already over to William Houston.
You're ahead of us.
Okay, we're working on that.
Are we good to move on?
Yes, so correction, it's two, almost two hundred and seventy parking spaces now.
Okay, the new, the new additions. Is there a certain amenity that you'd like to see?
Grab their car there. Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to William Houston Memorial Park, so this one, we updated the soccer fields and included a new playground, added parking lot, concessions, picnic pavilions and restrooms. We got a lot of feedback from the Parks Advisory Meeting, from the local soccer associations that this would, they were really excited about this one, so. And this would be a good space to incorporate a lot of different sized fields and have competitions, have a place to bring other cities for, other associations for competitions, so.
Gabe, is there an opportunity in the near future to push this park a little larger to the north based on the knowledge that the school district may be vacating some of this property in the near future?
We, we could have those discussions, yeah, we certainly could. I'll, I'll add in, you know, I've got kids that play soccer. Where I was raised, you know, people weren't playing soccer, but I'm telling you, that's where it's going. They have a desire, very preliminary, to improve the fields to accommodate league or tournament type play, forgive me for the right term, but that's certainly an opportunity worth considering and if you go there now for soccer, you know, it's packed as is, so.
All right, and then public feedback, so about equal on the concept updates that we proposed for the plan and then field updates and maintenance were in line with that, as well as people liked the concessions. There were a few people, I think we had two people total, that wanted basketball courts, so we had some feedback where they would say, well, we just want to go to this park because we live close by, but not necessarily to go to play soccer for any other function, so that was something that we wanted to include. Total cost estimate for this one, about five point four to seven mil for everything.
And these, this is all grass, right? It's not turf, it's grass.
Artificial turf.
Yeah, it's not artificial.
Correct, it's sod, yes.
So with it being sod, I mean, this, this park will carry a pretty significant maintenance cost with it.
Yes.
So just thinking through some things that we might be able to do to mitigate some of the maintenance cost.
Next one, we've got Opal Joe Memorial Park. So this one, we updated new picnic pavilion, playground, open lawn area with small one and a half to two foot berms to create some height differentiation in the sod area, new sidewalk that goes around the whole perimeter of the park and then some parking on the north side. And then this one, we got a lot of feedback just saying they really liked the concept updates. Some people said they didn't like the berms, so, and the restroom building was another disliked feature.
Because their kids are going to be there because that's where they hang out in that corner by the, yeah.
They did not, they didn't like the berms?
They don't like that restroom right there because.
Restroom and the berms are disliked.
Kids walk down this road right here and they go down by the creek right there.
Ah.
Yeah, and so they're worried about kids.
Why would somebody not want a restroom?
I believe it was the placement of the restroom, but there is a large existing gas line that runs basically where I've got the berms placed, so I had to maintain a buffer around that with improvement, so we could probably do some small concrete pad improvements there, but I would not, we would not be able to put, you know, the playground structure or restroom building or pavilion over that gas line, so everything's pushed to the south, but that's why I included the berms to create some height variations that kids could run over and so it just wasn't this large, open space area. Total cost estimate for Opal Joe Jennings is roughly one to one and a half million for these improvements.
Are you looking at replacing all of the playground equipment in this park?
Yes.
My granddaughter is not going to be happy.
Yeah, the goal is to create, bring in new playground equipment with the rubberized surfacing, so going back to the all-inclusive where everyone can at least get on to the pad and play and be included in play, so. I know we did receive feedback on keeping some of the existing equipment for kind of memories and thinking about that, so it's an option, this is just with our updates, we included new playgrounds.
She would probably want to salvage that merry-go-round to her own backyard.
Yeah.
It's been there since I was a kid. Merry-go-round, it's been there since I was a kid.
Far back as I can remember.
I know. We're not going to say how many years that is, Todd, huh?
I didn't say.
Oh, I know.
It can't be safe there.
All right, and then next park, we've got Sagewood, so this one, picnic pavilion, playground, we split the south end of the park into a dog park area and then we've got some additional shade trees and restroom facility. So very similar layout to how it's out there now, but just improved amenities and some additional amenities. So this one, we had, most of the people really liked the concept updates, they liked the shade, the drinking fountain. Disliked feature were restrooms for Sagewood. Total cost estimate for this one, one to one and a half million as well. And then we've got Brian Schwengler Memorial Park, so this one, we've got shaded seating, wooden and ornamental fence, canopy trees, playground enhancements and then a half court, basketball court.
Where are you relocating the sign at?
It, so currently, right now, it's where that, if you can see where that bench is located, it's currently sitting in there and we would just push it to where that island kind of comes out over in that area, more visibility and ability for us to have a sidewalk that goes all the way around continuous. So feed, public feedback, once again, concept updates, everyone, you know, general comments were, I love it, like the updates. Everyone really liked the shaded seating, the shade at the playground was a big highlight as well and most wanted feature. Some of the disliked were the restrooms, the wood fence, additional plantings mostly for maintenance purposes and then the pavilion. Total cost estimate for Brian Schwengler is about one point one three to one point six three million. And last, we've got Kiwanis. And last, we've got Kiwanis Veterans Memorial Park. So this one, we moved the stage, updated it, added a new pavilion, um, created new memorial monument areas, decorative paving, and enhanced plantings. Thought behind this was you could ha- use the stage for events, and then you could have people sitting in that decorative paving area for concerts, award ceremonies, anything like that, but then you still have your monument signs throughout the park.
Gabe?
Yeah, just one quick comment on this, uh, there may be potential or opportunity in the future to relocate this park to another location, so, uh, it, it's, it's current, it's beautiful, um, not very well used per the, the, the data, uh, but I know the few times a year where there's events, the, the noise of traffic kind of defeats the purpose to, to honor veterans, uh, because of its proximity to the boulevard, uh, but it may be something we consider relocating to another area i- in the future.
Right, maybe right here in the municipal complex area.
The feedback on this one, everyone mostly liked the concept updates. We did have a few people who wanted a playground, not sure it's feasible, but if it moves and expands, then maybe. And then there were two people or one person that did not like the concept updates, but didn't expand on what they didn't like, so. Cost estimate for Kiwanis Veterans, about six hundred and fifty to one million. And with that, if there's any questions?
So aside from design costs not being included in here, were there any other costs, soft costs that were not included? Just, as this is presented to the bond planning committee, we need to be very mindful of, of alerting them to any costs that may not be included in these estimates.
The only thing that was not included would be site prep costs, you know, like your rough grading, bringing equipment in or things like that, that would be the only thing that we didn't include, because we've got mobilization, but then again, if you mobilize, you know, several times, that cost adds up, but if you were to mobilize once, then you would be able to get your amen- most of your amenities at once. So the only thing that we did not include would be site prep, and that would be just dependent on the phasing, where you would want to place things or where things would move, so that would just be probably the only cost that we did not include.
So just in thinking through that, in addition to, uh, design costs, maybe prep the bond planning committee, uh, with the idea they may need to consider a site preparation contingency.
Mm-hmm.
And just set it to the side.
Yeah.
It's, it's always better to overshoot than undershoot.
Right.
Okay.
But even with the site, that's why we also did the range as well, because the fourteen mil would be on the extreme high side, and that would include the site prep costs, we just didn't want to just say that it's going to be this much and then not include those other factors, so.
Thank you very much, great presentation.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks.
All right, item number sixteen, capital improvements plan. Back to Dana.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to go over the capital improvement plan update for 2019. This is the same presentation format that you have seen in the years past, um, so this is the agenda outline, we're going to go over population, the water, CIP, wastewater, drainage, community facilities, we added a park, CIP, uh, and then streets. So the population, um, 2019 number was twenty-two thousand three hundred and eighty, which is about a two point nine-nine percent increase over the previous year. We did update the final build-out number to thirty-three thousand, which would be in 2035 versus previous year was twenty-thirty, showing twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven was your final build-out, due to, the number updated due to some of the mixed use and multifamily development that's coming into Saginaw.
Higher density.
Higher density, thank you. Yes. So the water, um, going over just the water demand for 2018, the water demand was slightly higher than the previous year, two point nine-seven MGDs, um, for the average water demand. Um, as you can see, just the chart, for those of you that are new to this, the normal year use is projected around three point oh-nine, which is, we're right in line with that. If it's a wet year, it would be a little bit lower, if it's a dry year, it'd be higher, so. And then the daily peak was five point six. Just going to try to breeze through that. This is kind of hard to read for those in the audience, but you all have your handouts. Um, Kim touched on some of this, but was something that briefly touched on, was, was updated from last year's. So, uh, project number five, we, all we did was split, um, the design from, added the construction phase services into the following fiscal year. The OPC, the construction cost stayed the same. FM one fifty-six relocations, um, that number changed quite a bit from the previous year because we had more information before, we didn't know what the relocations were going to be. Now that we have a design, I mean, we have a good handle that it's three hundred and seventy thousand versus the seven hundred and sixty. And then, um, Wes McLaury, project number seven, just increased about twenty thousand for inflation. And then the future projects were just updated based on 2019 current pricing. And that's the map of your projects, so I'm just kind of trying to breeze through this. If you have questions, interrupt me, I know it's getting, getting late.
Yeah, back to the escalation, you know, some of these are forecast into 2021, uh, which should be the next fiscal year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any projects, water-wise, that are beyond 2021 that we're targeting? Are we thinking about anything beyond?
Not that I'm aware of, is there anything that's, you know, I don't have an idea, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the little map of your projects, and then next, we're going to go to wastewater. So this shows the, um, M- MGDs for historical, for 2018 was two point six-nine, which was increased over 2017, which we had more rainfall, so you have more I and I, so that number going up makes sense. The CIP changes, so on, um, project number two, the Fairmount twelve-inch sanitary sewer, this was the project that bid, and then the low bid backed out, so we updated that price based on, on the next pricing.
Just back on the I and I issue that you mentioned, uh, we're down to our last phase, is that right? So like, the last piece of our I and I improvements coming up?
We're finishing up the improvements from the last phase, but we still have to stay to, we
Yeah, it's shown on here, yeah. Project number eight.
We've done two I and I studies, we have one to go.
Think so?
I would comment on I and I, though. I mean, in Fort Worth, we did two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of I and I work in about a five-year period. They're about to launch on another two hundred million twenty years later, so it, it's never truly done.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking is, is it certainly looks like, just based on the uptick, uh, we've still got a lot of work to do. Okay.
Okay.
Fix the I and I issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We're doing studies to identify what our problems are, we'll have to go back and spend money to fix it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so then we added in project three, the BNSF utility relocations that, um, you mentioned earlier, it's when the, they're expanding their tracks, so there's two locations that, um, we need to do a water line abandonment and then a sewer relocation, so we showed the, um, co- construction cost estimate based on that, and that four sixty-five, four sixty-five thousand dollars, um, was based off what we saw for the Fairmont twelve-inch sewer line, so that's that number.
Can you remind me where that track expansion is, that number three? Is it on the east main line?
Yeah, I just can't see on that map.
The, uh, the project actually goes from Bailey Boswell all the way to Long Avenue in Fort Worth, but it, it'll be parallel to the existing track, uh, on the east side.
Yeah, it's the one that's east of Manchester.
Would require a new embankment, but it'll be done within existing right-of-way, but as you, as you go north of, uh, Bailey Boswell, the Fort Worth line, which is the one that we just had the quiet zone put in place, uh, that will be within, within the same track alignment, so.
So it's the east main line?
It's, right.
It's by the mayor's house?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes, that one.
No, no new trains by the mayor's house, so we speculated.
New train.
New tracks, no new trains.
New tracks and new trains by the mayor. Okay.
Okay, and then and then the, yeah, so the item five was the I and I repairs for this next year, and then we're going to, it's going to be in two different fiscal years. It was previously planned for one fiscal year, the previous fiscal year. And then project six, we just updated those, up, project six and seven didn't change. So there, is the map updated showing the BNSF ones? Moving on to drainage, the only change on drainage was we broke up the design into the multiple years of fate of how we're going to design it. Previously, it was shown all being spent in one fiscal year, and the number reduced, so it was originally four hundred and sixty-some thousand, I don't remember the exact number, it's only three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Um, so the map, community facilities, um, the top part is the ADA transition plan, so nothing's really changed from previous year for that, still moving on with the phased approach for the transition plan. And then we updated the community facilities items, projects two through eleven, based on some of the information we got from P-GAL, correct? Okay. So then we updated the map to reflect that, and then we added the parks, and this, we kind of just, I mean, just, just to have it in here replace order, we just went in order of what Catherine's presentation was, Willow Creek took Kiwanis, and we just had the range at the top. We assume it's going to be a multiple-phase approach for each one, but we just don't know that yet, so we just wanted to at least get the total cost in here for planning purposes. And that's the map showing the parks. And then, well, last is the streets. So this is your master plan, nothing significantly has changed on this, all the costs are based on what's identified in the master plan. So the changes for this was on Bailey Boswell, um, project number one, B, the railroad fee increased, it was two point seven million and some change, it's actually three point three five and maybe growing, we don't know, we keep getting invoiced by the railroad. So besides that, I think every, I mean, we're pretty much completed with Bailey Boswell Phase Two, we did the final walkthrough with the contractor, so we should be closed out with that project prior to the fiscal year. Bailey Boswell overpass, um, the changes you'll see here is construction cost is eleven point seven million, we added in the easements for Walmart and for the Crans property, and then we added E and F, or brand-new items, um, we were notified by text dot that they were not going to be inspecting the bridge components, which we previously thought was part of the agreement, so the city's going to have to hire a third-party inspector, so we included cost for that. And then we found out from the railroad in our discussions with them that they will have to have an inspector on-site, two days a week during non-critical work in the right-of-way, and five days a week during critical work in the right-of-way, so that kind of adds up with two railroad companies there, so we're estimating that about four hundred thousand dollars.
But the twelve-nine-thirty includes all costs.
That we are aware of now.
That's still in line with what we were talking about a couple of months ago, is that right? It is higher.
I think, uh, a couple of months ago, overall, project-wise, bond funds, including all phases, we were about two million short total, but these new numbers were probably about two point five.
About a half, half million. And, and the longer we wait, the market's not going to get any softer.
It's not going to be cheaper to build anything else.
No.
CMAT's not going to get cheaper.
Everything goes up every day.
So what, what is, Dana, in your mind, what's keeping us from just pulling the trigger? Is it?
It's the railroad agreement, railroad approving us, so UP is the biggest issue we have right now, them giving us permission to have a column in the right-of-way, which we're, we feel like we're getting close with them, and then
We, they, uh, and there's a lot of history there, but initially, when we had, uh, conversations before, my time, uh, the railroad was receptive to having a pier in the right-of-way, and we went on that, on that basis, they had a large turnover, their policy changed, so now they have some heartburn about the pier in the right-of-way. We have an executive that's advocating on our behalf.
An executive at UP?
At UP, that's, that's advocating on our behalf, trying to get a variance to that rule, uh, based on the history of this project, so, uh, we feel like that's going to happen, uh, have a, have a strong comfort level there. On the BNSF side, we finally got through the review comments, we think, and they're preparing the agreement now, so, uh, hopefully that'll be coming before you soon.
Yeah, so the biggest thing holding us up is that, you know, that they can't do a whole lot of work without being on the railroad right-of-way, so awarding a con, I mean, going up for bid and awarding, they're going to have to hold their bids for, we don't, unknown time, so that's why we're kind of trying to, at least trying to get a night timeline from the railroad of, yes, you're approved, we're working on the agreements, and the agreements are going to be ready in three months, and that we will know, right? So
Right, and I think, you know, that was kind of the issue with Phase Two, is that it got, it got, uh, awarded without all the permits in place, and so we had delays, uh, with the work in the right-of-way, so it's better to have all your permits and right-of-way in place before you award a contract, obviously, uh, so you have less delay and less chance of claim for the contractor, delayed claims.
So then it, this, is that, if I'm doing the math right, Dolph, correct me if I'm wrong, we started out at five-one, we were needing to adjust to potentially seven-one, our side, seven point one million, with, with, with the county contributing the rest, because we started out at a nine point one million dollar cost for the overpass, that was the beginning point, and we had four million dollars coming from the county, giving us five point one million dollars worth of the burden to build it, but now you think we're closer to seven point six?
I don't have my spreadsheet in front of me, but let me, let me explain it this way. We had, that spreadsheet, y'all have seen many times, has the total bond projects in there with all of the sources of funding and expenses. At the end of the construction of the, of the project that's going on right now, Phase Two and Three combined, uh, when that's all said and done, and with the newest estimates we have from the engineers on what we're going to have to do on the bridge, even with the, the fund, five and a half million from the county, we're about two and a half million dollars short. I mean, we, we would spend all the bond funds and then still need another two and a half million to complete the bridge.
Okay, so, so where we had five-one set aside, we think it's going to cost us seven-six, that's the two and a half million.
Yeah.
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then for the future projects, um, we just made a few changes, we reorganized Knowles to follow the phasing I presented earlier, and then also, you'll see five and five A, what that is, is Wes McLaury, there has been some previous talks about changing from Knowles to, um, Saginaw Boulevard to a different cross-section than what's the master plan showing, which I have exhibit here on page twenty-nine of your packet, kind of showing what an alternative cross-section could be for more of a urban town center, is what we're calling the cross-section, um, since, you know, the right-of-way is pretty tight as you get to the east, there's not a whole lot of room to get a hundred footer right-of-way and four lanes of traffic in there, so we looked at an alternative cross-section and did some preliminary estimates on that, and you're looking about the same cost for this option versus the four-lane divided, and really, is there's more aesthetics with this option is why it ended up being about a wash, there's less pavement, but there's more aesthetics.
It's beautiful.
It is.
So, we just wanted to have you see an actual picture of what we're talking about, so that's, we did that. And then, so yeah, so that's pretty much all I had to update you on, um, any questions?
So where
And all the other projects, the update, sorry, we updated all the other projects on 2019 and pricing, so there was some increase from escalation from previous years, and then there was some other things that we did. So if you compare it to 2018, you'll see McLaury and some of the other projects have a little bit of increase from the previous year. Patrick, you got a question?
No.
Okay.
Just had a comment, that's fine.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Moving forward, discussing the strategic plan, item, item seventeen, uh, annual action plan for that city manager, Gabe Raynham.
Mayor and Council, it's my goal to make this the briefest item that's come before you this evening. Uh, I will ask, uh, only that you review, um, the items that were included, uh, on this. I intend, I think the best use of our time would be to revisit this, uh, when we I intend, I think the best use of our time would be to revisit this when we have our, probably our budget workshop on the Saturday, so all these items are gonna be related in a, to our annual budget. I don't think any of these projects are, are a surprise or new to you, so they came out of the, the same discussions we talked about when the council approved the strategic plan. If you see anything that is missing, there'll be some minor tweaks that I'll, I'll bring forward to you, but if you see anything missing, let me know, we'll revisit this later, happy to answer any questions this time.
So what, what Saturday have we picked? Oh, August tenth, I'm traveling, if it's, if it's not already set in stone.
Yeah, so, we, we can, August tenth will be, you know, we've done the budget workshops a piece at a time, we're just gonna come back together and wrap it all, so there won't be any new information at that time. The last big workshop that we have is the general fund, which is our next meeting. I can answer any questions if you have specific, you know, my preference would be to adopt this document by resolution, in the same manner with the budget, so just let me know.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, I had the same conflict, and I was able to put all my comments together in writing, get it over to, I'll get it to you.
Yeah.
On the budget component, but what I'm suggesting is, since this, this work plan, I wanna be careful about what we're packing into that day.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to be a part of that discussion relative to the work plan.
There's no need to approve this at this, it's not time-sensitive.
No.
We can move this.
It's not, yeah, we can't.
I just don't wanna do it on the same day as...
I, I don't want you to miss it here, why don't we bump this to maybe first, second meeting in September?
We can do that, yeah. Yeah, my, my intention is that we run the plan, you know, with the, with fiscal year, it's just easier that way to track, track quarterly, that sort of thing, yeah, that's fine.
That makes sense, we bump this?
Is council okay with that?
Yeah, everybody okay with that? We do the budget workshop on the tenth, but we, the strategic plan or the action plan will be bumped. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Gabe on item seventeen? And I would encourage you, if you have, look over, look so, if you have questions, you know, contact Gabe individually, or contact me if you have any questions, and we can discuss offline. All right, so item eighteen at nine thirteen, we convene back in a regular session. Item nineteen at nine thirteen, we're in executive session, we will return to adjournment.
You okay?